This plug would not, absolutely would not work, could not, no power down there. Some down the basement, I think we're down here, some down the basement. I'm chasing wires and I'm trying to figure out what the hell is going on. I finally end up figuring out that whoever wired it, wired that plug on the GFCI was in the bathroom. And the GFCI's bathroom strip, and that's why I had no power to that plug. And it was completely random why they would've wired it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean just totally random.
That one thing I tried to do is make, when I did all my home runs, I tried to make it very logical, you know, to match your back. I did dedicated home runs to the dishwasher, washing, you know.
Oh yeah.
You know, the type of things. Because there's nothing worse than if you have something going on, you want to put a different plug in or something, and not multiple breakers as well.
Yep, side with rights. Side with rights.
I got another, I got another question for you to get back.
Okay. What you got?
Okay, so 12-3 has, no, 10-3. Random hot water heater. I ran that instead of 12-2, or 10-2, because that's what I had, was something out that door. There's one extra wire. I'm not sure which one I'm not supposed to use, but without pulling the panel off, see what is wired in. So I think it's, um, red, black, yeah, red, black, light. It's the white one.
Well, why should it be your neutral anyway? Your hot water's 220, it should be your, your red and black.
So, but coming out of the hot water heater is like, oh, it's only too wide.
Right. And that's a 240.
Okay, and so...
So you're giving off your 240 and ground. You got a ground wire in there also? Then use your, use the white to ground, put a piece of green paper in with it.
But it doesn't, I've only got two wires total.
But there'll be inside your hot water heater on the top.
Yeah.
There'll be a ground screener, should be your answer screener.
Don't use the, don't use the copper ground?
If you do have copper ground, okay, yeah, use it out and just cut the white off, use your red light.
Thanks, that's what I thought.
Or what I would do is, I always hate to cut one off.
Just tape it up?
I pull it back, tape it up.
Leave it?
What taper you using? Best tape you can ever use in real life, just for future reference, Scotch 33. It doesn't get brittle, it'll stay flexible. It's the best tape you can ever use. Yeah.
I bought some of them, I remember. It may have been...
So if it's Scotch 33, you're old.
Okay. So just hold it back, they...
Hold it back, tape the hell out of it.
The white, and use the other two?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I thought, because they matched up, uh, what was coming out of the hot water heater. That's been a month and a half ago, when the electrician came in and wired that.
Yep.
Someone did it, wired it in there.
That's how it worked?
Morning.
Must be selling something today.
Oh, is there a sheriff walking around?
Yeah, must be sheriff selling.
Morning.
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 Those, uh, notepads and stuff that were sitting over here, actually come out of the box during that, first drawer on that side. And a bunch again, so it's like, or...
Forgot all that.
Yeah.
Do you want a mark?
Yes, it'd be great.
Need any notepads up in the office, there. I keep halfway, brought it in.
Oh, that's nice of them. Thank you.
Perfect. We're done.
Done. How are you?
I'm kind of spaced, everything seems to be conspiring against efficiency.
Why is that?
Oh, I mean, the coffee maker is all torn down. Stapling stuff, last stapling. Behind the truck.
Oh.
I heard some sheriff's thing that was just peeling out. Full lights going too. Morning.
Morning, Eric.
Okay, we're okay. Sheriff's outlet. Well, she's not even...
No, that was, yeah, that's, no, it's...
Because, uh, I don't understand that.
Is it for the fire and...
Yeah.
Christie created that?
Did you see everybody have it up or...
I just brought one.
Okay. Didn't do it enough. Thank you.
All right, I have nine o'clock, will you please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Jerika, will you hear up?
This is just a little follow along for what I've got today, and then I have a couple pages tabbed for the pricing comparison. So I wanted to talk to you guys about, um, allowing my office to switch from CIC to Fiddler for a records management program. The reason I want to change over from CIC to Fiddler, uh, a lot of it is to deal with what kind of customer service that CIC currently provides, which is not very great. I've got some emails in this, um, just to show you the lack of communication, what I've been asking for, and how I've asked for it. I know Tammy had had Fiddler do a demo several years ago, and she was impressed with him and wanted to switch, but she just wanted to wait for whoever came in to make that decision instead of, um, switching back then. So now I'm ready. With one of the emails that I have in there, it'd be the first one you come across, this is communication with our account manager with CIC. We're trying to finish a large project that was done with US Imaging for the scanning, um, indexing project. We've got the images in, but we have not been able to get CIC to communicate with USImaging to get them to upload the import for the indexing. So it's just kind of a hassle to try to communicate with them. Uh, Fiddler, they come very highly recommended by USImaging. They said they don't have any issues with getting things imported. Uh, they communicate great, so those are kind of a couple of the reasons why. They also have, um, more opportunities for the fraud alert that we're advertising right now. Um, right now, CIC, they only allow email alerts. They go out, a lot of our customers that are much older don't do emails. Um, a lot of them don't have an advocacy technology and stuff, so...
So this was the alert when somebody's trying to, maybe take...
Yes.
Title, title.
Yeah, so essentially, if you fill out this form, um, it sets you up for a notification system. Anytime a document is filed in the office with your name, you get an alert, whether it was something that you did or something that was fraudulent. It just helps the customer know what's going on with their property. With all these spam and fraud things coming out, and people trying to sell people's land in accounting already, is something that we need to be more aware of and doing more to help prevent or cause, you know, awareness when it does happen. Because otherwise, you don't know until it's too late.
And Fiddler?
Fiddler, they have a better system. They have where, um, I would just record a voice memo, and it would call them, or it can text them, or it can email. And they also have, um, something that's Fiddler exclusive is a notary fraud alert that they just woke out. So you enter the notary's information, and if it comes back, it doesn't match with something in the program, then, then you would get an alert for that as well, because notaries can't use fraud alerts. So that would help, um, with us getting that stuff available to the public.
Other counties around that have Fiddler?
Yeah, there's several around, there's several new ones. Um, I do have some testimonials in the back, uh, behind the Fiddler information. It just kind of has, um, so Ashson County is one that they have switched over the last few years. They absolutely love it. Everybody that I've talked to that hires Fiddler, they highly recommend. And most of these testimonies, they were with CIC before Fiddler. So a lot of them are switching. It's a lot of the chatter on our association email. Not too many people are happy with CIC and having to switch to other resources or vendors.
So you got CIC for something else, don't you?
CIC is a payroll, I believe, yeah. And it will communicate, we just have to have, we have to tell them what it needs. So it'll be, you know, during the implementation, they'll look at what we need to communicate with who. They'll get that all set up. The deeds on that, we can go to the appraisers and clerk's office the next morning, which right now, we just make copies and hand walk them over. So it has a little bit more opportunities. They have a Baskin site hosting that's kind of like their Fort Knox, um, of their backup, so that way if things do go down, or, um, like Ashson, they were hacked in their county. So they were down for a couple weeks, but they were able to get with Fiddler, they got it back online. Didn't lose any images or anything like that. So one of the things that I have in here is that packet with Fiddler. It just kind of discusses kind of what their reach are. They're, um, more based in Arkansas than they are in Kansas, but they are growing in Kansas. It talks about the software overview. A lot of the surrounding title companies are already used to Fiddler with their record searches and stuff, so it wouldn't be much of a learning curve, um, outside of our office, per se.
Do they have an office in Kansas?
Um, they don't, that I know of, but they have, um, I believe they're out of Missouri. So they have three people that are in our area, and they're constantly traveling. But I can email Mark and he replies within, you know, half an hour where it's CIC. It takes several days, weeks to even get a response. Just the lack of communication and professionalism that I've received from CIC is...
So this is, this is what...
That's what we currently have with CIC right now.
And what it's costing us is $17,000 a year.
Uh, so that, on the first page, they combine the whole county as one. So on the second page is our signature sheet from...
Yeah, $95,000?
Yeah, so the pricing, if you compare to the last page that Fiddler had it, their annual fee is cheaper because it includes more things. And their program is all on one platform. You don't have to open three different screens to operate your whole program. The thing that costs a little bit more money with that would be the Baskin hosting services. So then you'll see the first year with the implementation, that would cost quite a bit of money, which I can, I have that in my capital outlay, but I can still have it there.
So you can cover the initial cost?
I can cover the whole thing, um, for the, for the year one, under the capital outlay. Years following, I can easily get my tech funds to cover the rest of that for the years prior.
With the increase, the yearly increase from $9,050 to $4,500, tech fund will cover that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, since we do have CIC for, uh, payroll, and is it, have you looked into what it's going to do, if they're going to try to raise the cost for that? Or since they're kind of married together right now, right?
Yeah, I don't think it should impact the other offices, because it's, I don't think it's like a group. I mean, I know your office might know about that.
So we ought to have Mary come down and visit with Mary a little bit louder?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know for sure that it's not going to impact, since we're tied together, I want to make sure it's not impact, one, they're going to raise the price on that, you know, get rid of it for you. So I want to double check on that, so...
Sure.
Would it be Mary or, or Christine?
I don't know, as far as billing part?
No, yeah, as far as the...
Is it probably Erin maybe?
Would it affect the use of CIC in your office if we get rid of it out of the other office?
I don't think it would affect it, because we didn't used to have CIC payroll, but we had CIC in there, obviously, for many years, we paid that. As far as billing part...
I just want to make sure that we're not going to get a price increase in the clerk's office. You know, we can have yours and increase the clerk's, so...
Yeah, I can have Erin guess, because I think she's the one that's in charge of that.
When do you need a decision on this?
Oh, as soon as possible. It takes them about, um, they say it takes about eight months to get it in place, um, which I was hoping to have it before. I have to sign another contract with CIC.
When is that?
Uh, the end of the year.
There's a possibility that you could have it done.
Fiddler said if I can get them an answer, like, as soon as possible, they can get me up on it before I have to sign another contract with CIC.
Well, if we can find out for sure that, you know, we're not going to get a price jack on the clerk's office by pulling it out of yours, uh, and you have the funds to cover everything, and I have the problem.
I can check with that, I didn't think that...
I think that's kind of a consensus, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is Ashson County the only one close around, like, do you know where they are?
Uh, Brown County knows two.
Oh, you went...
Leavenworth, Shawnee.
You said someone had it, yeah, the phone was through.
So there's a little bit more, just a test, please remember. There's, um, there's a map.
Is that Laredo?
It has Laredo, yeah.
Okay, Shunaken's, uh...
Yeah, on, so on, um, page three of that Fiddler packet, it shows, um, the counties that have added partners in Kansas right now. There's several in northeast and surrounding, and it's growing, of course, but...
And you've talked to, like, Brown County has it, they...
Yeah, Brown County, they love it. She told me, don't even ask your question, just do it. She does not miss C I C at all, so, yeah. I think with the level of communication, they're always doing more learning and training. I think it would be really beneficial to have her office.
Is the C I C contract up on payroll at the same time?
I'm not sure about that.
Does Fiddler, does Fiddler do something?
Fiddler does only their register of needs specific, which is why they have a better service for what we need. According to this invoice, I think they're all on the same billing, which would be January one through December thirty-first. But I think they'll check with our office.
Just so the, you know, worst case scenario is that you cancel. Cancel this, they say, well, we're going to jack it from payroll cost and you take that out too. At the end of the day, I think there's probably a lot more payroll companies in there are in the space than there are registered deeds companies.
Right.
So, I mean, at least not stuck with kind of the price they pay.
Yeah, and I know talking to Christie, she was not very pleased with the payroll system with C I C anyway. So it sounded like she liked what they had in place before when I talked to her about it last. But I don't know if she's going to look into switching or not. We were, hey, it'd be for her time too. If I'm going to, you know, do it at the same time anyway, but. So that's all I've got. I don't want to take up too much of your guys' time. I just wanted to present the Fiddler company and what they stand for. Mark would be happy to come in and do a demo to show you guys how to move the system operates. If you guys would be interested, just let me know and I can communicate that with them and have them come set up something.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so like you say, let us, let us do a little checking and I think general consensus is, we're not going to make a vote in there, the general consensus is that, you know, this is probably something we'll let you forward with.
Okay, so I will hang on to this purchase order then. I'll talk to the clerk's office to see about anything, little price adjustments and then maybe by the next week hopefully we'll have something and can meet with you.
Well, if you can get something back to us today as far as, you know, whether or not you think there's going to be a price increase if clerk's office thinks there's going to be a price increase for, for that or if they need to put out their payroll up for bid, then, you know, we'll go ahead and get it done today. That way you can move forward with it.
Perfect, all righty, I see what I'm trying to go.
Yes.
Were you able to move the five cabinets that was in front of the door around Ashson's store?
I was waiting for Pat to move it with the volley. And he's, because he's supposed to move a couple of other cabinets. And I told Lisa about last week that Pat has cabinets and he's not able to move it.
So you'll get it too?
Yes, I'm hoping to have it done before, before the end of the day. Because I know it's not supposed to be a lot of cost. Yep, thank you.
Stop. Morning, boy. Are you, good?
All right, one twenty-six and V four road. We had two called them last week about the E P S driver said he couldn't do down the road. So we got down there and got all the trees cut before we was, they can't get up the, it's a bit of a driveway now. That's off him, the road is clear to that area. Rock budget, we're concerned with that. As of the other day when I did the sign off sheets, short of we're down to two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Forty dollars, eighteen cents. And then the sales tax money right now, I'm at one hundred and ninety-three, seven fifty. So we're going to be out here three more.
So at this point then, you're just going to slow down.
I'm pulling, gonna probably pull a couple semi drivers and put in the motor tractors. They don't have any more time for motor trucks for me.
Yeah, that's a good thing too.
And, and so the only time we'd be using gravel at this point is mud holes or?
Mud holes here, deer run. Deer run, the survey we got done out there with Tank last week.
Is it pretty close where we thought everything was?
Uh, we're in good shape, we're in good shape than we thought.
Okay.
This here is the circle area that we have. His little markers he has ended up being down here, we're maybe more up this way. Anyway, he's got a mark there. We run over the sixty feet which brought us to here and then actually right away goes out here to the thirteen feet. So if we can get this, those utility boxes here, these power poles, I believe we can work this out out here and not have to touch anything over here on the caucuses. The caucuser, we wanted maybe come in off this line here and maybe past sixty feet and just put a couple of flags there just so they know that that is where the right of way is just for future reference. We're not going to get into it.
Yeah, I would not.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I think we can get this done out here. We're definitely going to have to stick a tube in this ditch here to take care of that. Thing is, is getting that, those boxes and power poles.
And that will be, that'll be on the landowner, correct?
That, well, the stuff is in our right of way. It's in our right of way.
So, yeah.
They should, it may take them a little time because like I said, I think there's five of their and, you know, phone lines and other power poles. That may take them a little time, but whichever reason you want against our, please work out there.
Okay. So are you going to, you just give that landowner, homeowner about getting the power pole in early moves? Or are you just going to talk to the builder?
Uh, the utility company probably, go direct to them. Because we'll have to probably do the other giant J B N on their part too. Uh, we've got some ditching going on down on Q one twenty-six going south. Got a tube washing going down that same area. I was down through there a couple of weeks ago and noticed that there's probably a few tubes flooded and those washes coming out into the roads. Got a couple crews down there working in that area right now. They had one on one thirty-four, they went and washed out this morning. And they got one on two fourteen that needed washing, so. Fuel pad out here at the shop, we have the rock built up around the concrete now. Talked to Rat Fletcher and he said that about the second week of June, they would be getting the tank out here. He was supposed to get back, would be on a final date, so we have equipment there and loaded it.
So where's you going to use soda? Where's you going to use accelerator and loader?
Yeah, probably accelerator and a big wheel, although we've got a big set of four of us.
Okay, perfect.
I think it's around twelve thousand pounds for the tank by itself. We've got issue down on one ninety-eight, some blowouts on it. So we're going to probably have to get some asphalt brought in there. So again, that usually comes out on a rock budget. Don't know if we need to look for future to have an asphalt budget by itself or just keep going out rock, right? Because usually.
Yeah, might not be a bad idea because I know, I know a hundred and tenth, there's going to be, I would anticipate, I drove out to seven thirty the other day and I would anticipate the amount of semi traffic, there's going to be some blowouts on it by the end of the year, but we're going to have to asphalt it in.
Like I said, maybe something we need to look at to, you know, set some money aside. I think last year we did, I think we ran it twenty loads of asphalt just for weight patch and things like that.
You might go, you might go back like three years and take an average of what you, what's been for the last three years and can look at setting up something.
Okay, and then Mary let us know this morning that the time parts for twenty twenty-four are loaded back into the system, involves time parts on, off the fuel and all that stuff. They're making progress on that, so that's a good thing.
And did we ever, has anybody ever come up with a, why are turning so slow? Other than the two computers ran around the same?
They, not really. They tend to pull the stuff off the, uh, server and loaded it, just direct it to their computer now and then things are running better, but we have to do this backup out there on things, you know, quite often. That's kind of where we're at now. But I know Judy came out there, they spent over half a day with IP pathways and were on the home conversation.
Right.
So far.
Better, but not a lot.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And now we've run into also, about a week, part of the day in, several customers in there, so I was helping to do some order, you know, get some customers through. And we've noticed that it used to be that Darlene and I could work at the same time on the start program. And now when I'm working, it's locking her out and when she's working, it's locking me out.
We need to get that ironed out. If that's changed from what originally it was, if something has had to change on their end, not ours.
Let's get that program.
I don't know, well, it always worked before.
Yeah, that's what I say.
Until that response, go ahead and this IP pathways guy called, it, it always worked before. You know, we're not going to both work the same.
Have you, have you let, what's her name, the stars?
Not yet. Like I said, we just ran into Friday.
I'd go ahead and email her and get her thinking about what's going on because if it's worked and now it doesn't, then there's, there's, either facts have been put in or whatever. So we need to get that figured out.
You guys have their logins?
Yes.
Okay. Let me find out if that's the first question.
Yeah.
So we cross logins and it definitely locked out.
All right.
That's pretty much all I have to do.
Okay, I had a question, got text last night for K road where we're patching ads and trucks. A toddler will get, it is, I went out this morning, they've got it diserupped and I think that when we get the chip and seal on it, it should smooth it out quite a bit.
So and something out there is, that road hasn't been touched for many, many years and I know a lot of staff, a lot of time that are on it sealing it, you know, like it should be sealed. So it's, and that's basically the only road we've been on on the patchings so far this year. And it's been very expensive, but it's something that needs to be done. Hopefully the chip and seal over it should last as long as it years.
Yeah, it should, it should smooth it out quite a bit. I mean, it's not, it's not going to be perfect, but I think that, and he was saying, he did, I stopped talking this morning, talked to Drew and he said that a lot of the patching that you're having to do was across the road, which, you know, you go across the road and you try to fill in a wide crash and you're patching like that, it's going to raise it up. You can't do a whole heck of a lot of that. By the time we brush it off, everything ought to, it ought to come out pretty good, so.
There's lots of spider webbing out in the chip and seal and all the stuff, so we can cover all that.
And he said, yes, there were people stopping, telling thank you, so that's, that's good, so.
Wouldn't you anticipate to complete W is going to cost in gravel? It's kind of, we had, there's some other income that comes in besides the four percent of the budget. I think there was special highway, few little highways. Yeah, I didn't see that on the report. Do you know how much would be in that?
Yeah, I think it's on the, on the income on top.
Oh.
On one hundred?
On the one hundred?
On the top. One hundred, four hundred, just that question.
It's placed on City County Highway, anticipated revenue five hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Thank you.
Well, we've only got a hundred and thirty-two so far, so I mean, that's, and there again, that's anticipated.
Sure. My thought process was depending on what that project's going to take because we're beating up a lot of that rock budget. If we leave our point four percent and we leave this alone till like October-ish, September-ish and take a look and see what's in there and see if there's a possibility we can come back. I would really like to get W.
Oh, yeah, we need to get W then. That's all I'm worried about is W.
But I think at this point, we've got to just move gravel where it's absolutely necessary.
Yeah.
Versus, it would be nice to have additional gravel. I think we've put a lot of gravel on these roads. We've got to just, if there's a mud hole or a blowout, yeah. But other than that, let's lay them up and let's leave them alone.
Yeah.
I know some of the roads I drove on after the rain were in really good condition. They were almost like hard surface roads because we have good positive drainage off of them. Let's maybe not go in and disturb that at this point and just kind of leave, leave, leave these roads alone unless there's just hot holes that need to be taken care of, but.
Yep.
Maybe, go ahead.
I'm estimating to complete W is about three or four weeks.
I think if we leave, just use the bare minimum out of the rock budget, leave the four percent of special highway alone, by fall, there should be enough. Then we can make that, go back and, and attack that. But just do the bare minimum as far as mud holes, blowouts, that type of thing with gravel.
Deer run over here is probably going to run around one, just testing in the rocks. It's about three or four to a mile.
Yeah. The other thing we'll have income coming back will be the midstates material. It's about a hundred plus, but we'll have that income coming back.
It should already be in there, it's ninety-seven thousand.
Yeah, we usually don't get that till next year.
But what we have is.
I saw that, I saw that on there, so that's, that's already in, that's already been deposited, so.
That's from last year.
Exactly, so we can move that into, that has not been moved though, correct?
It was supposed to have been moved.
It's in, it's in where it belongs.
Yeah, it got put in the wrong spot and then it got moved to the midstates. Was that refuckered?
Yeah, where.
That's the one down here that's, it says rock ninety-seven thousand?
Well, on the one that you just got, it should be on the top where it says.
Yeah, I think it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand, if I'm looking at that right.
Is this the one that you printed?
That's, that was, that was from last week.
Which, it's included in this hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, so look, we're, that.
It got put back.
Okay, well, Christie got it, we were looking at stuff the other day, um, under the midstates, I think it's reinforcement, she was calling.
Yeah, midstates, well, like I, midstates materials, road maintenance.
Road maintenance, yeah. When Christie got that last, two weeks ago, what, it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand in it plus the ninety-seven was supposed to be added to it, so there should be a total of like two hundred and forty, around that.
Okay, well, I've just got a hundred and thirty-five right here.
Okay, so the ninety-seven must come in and get to that.
Well, this was, this was as of five thirty-one, so, yeah.
So can we verify that whether it, that, if it doesn't have?
Can you see that?
It says out here, then?
It looks like it obviously had it in there.
It says unencumbered balance thirty-seven. Shouldn't it be more than that? If I.
Yeah, and what'd you say then?
We'll verify that. So I think, I would, you know, I guess from my perspective, let's, let's not think that we're not going to do W, but I think we would be able to, it's just going to be delayed. We're just going to have to, you know, this may be a great summer, if it dries up, work on ditching.
Well, so with, you know, on W, you can get the ditching started, get it done.
Great point, yeah.
Get out there and then put the gravel on it and so.
Yeah, that's a great point.
We could do like we did the first two miles too. The next miles that we do is do half. We could do like we did the first two miles too, we could, the next miles that we do is do half of the, you know, usually like three thousand tons per mile, we do like fifteen hundred tons and then come back later in the year for the other fifteen hundred.
Yeah, just as long as we don't, gonna zero that out in advance, but, but yeah, let's just obviously call it down and.
But even getting the ditching done right now will hold a lot of logs, so.
Well, the downside of ditching is if you get a lot of mud on one road, you need to get it covered.
Right. But on some of these other roads, where was the two, where was, I'm sorry to take you back, you had said there was two on one thirty-four, was it a, you wrote?
I'm not sure, I just said there was, they're gonna clean the two out this morning, we've got four one thirty-four.
There is, Jason went in and dropped his blade in, pulled the dirt, did a great job cleaning it out, but you can see the whole windmill's completely flooded, so I wondered if maybe that, that's.
Did they? Maybe just sit on one thirty-four.
Okay.
Uh, we got the ditching thing, uh, as we already talked about that. And we're also on, uh, soldier over here crushed two inch rock for, for deer run and for W for those, uh, sand spots and dirt spots, uh, so we're talking about maybe just go ahead and haul it over to the yard here, that way it's just a couple miles away. Um, that way we do get into deer run and we got some mud out there, some dirt, we're gonna get rain, haul that rock in real quick to get it covered, so.
Okay.
Kind of, we'll find it also.
Okay. Uh, I did have a couple of things here, um, I don't know, we might've talked about this, but I don't remember it. With our labomax people, are they covered insurance wise for driving our vehicles?
Yes.
Through them or through the county?
Through labomax.
Through labor.
Same, same with the, with the.
Okay. So they're covered, they're covered in driving vehicles, okay, and then we had, uh, last year, first part of issue, uh, talked about using Aaron for drug testing, have we started that yet?
He was checking into some stuff, uh, uh, to see if his stuff would cover our CBL riders and stuff.
Okay.
For the clearinghouse and all that, and I have never heard back from him, whether he, he can or can't.
Okay, I, I understood all he needed from you was a memorandum of understanding, I don't know what, uh, that would entail, so you might talk to him. Uh, because the sooner we can get that done, the better offer be, because if he was offering to do them free, then it would, it would help us out, so. So you might get with him and, and find out.
That face and see what we're.
Yep, and see if we need to talk to Ross up in Muck if we need to, or how, how we need to do that, so, okay? Alright, maybe else guy make? Perfect, alright, you're off the hook.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright. We did have the brand baby last year.
Uh, congratulations.
We came five weeks early. Oh, he's, he's doing well, doing okay.
This, this report was printed by twenty-two.
Okay, that's what I might have guessed.
I have the one that you gave me the other day.
Okay, what does it show?
It shows a hundred and thirty-seven anticipa, or a hundred and thirty-five anticipated, monthly was ninety-seven something, but it says unencumbered thirty-seven.
Yeah, exactly, so that's, so the ninety-seven is all that's been put in there this year?
We, didn't we just get a check from it?
That's what it was, the ninety-seven.
It was more than that, it's four thousand, it went toward us.
Right, okay, then there wasn't anything in there from last year then?
No.
Okay, so total.
No, I didn't.
Total is ninety-seven.
I'm just trying to.
Don't check first because when I go through that stuff on the mid states thing, she was telling me, because we're affected with that camera, it's a hundred thirty-five.
But the only thing that's similar is that.
Block reminds you, that was ninety-seven, we should have done that one at two forty.
But it wasn't a block.
Right, thanks.
Alright, thank you.
You bet.
You did. Yes.
Okay, so this, uh.
Four hundred.
Resolution Todd has everything in it except the, uh, who was it?
I was just trying to.
Center somebody?
Do you have a page?
Hang, hang, hang on for a second, go ahead.
Come on.
Scott's back. Yes.
I do have a page, it's for Jill, and Scott's many days in, and I brought up service and he's like, oh, she would be that picture.
And it's all, that's all budgeted and everything, that's budgeted and everything, everything's good on there?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. I'm trying to see who that one is.
Well, it was, uh, insurance company, insurance mission, yeah, it, it actually has less than the prior one had. Because it does, it just took out language that said fire and wind and storm damage.
Notice at all?
Any damage destroys a structure completely, it's put loss.
So this will replace the other automatically, or do we need?
Yeah, about automatically for county, when we would be assembling something.
Yes, right.
What's the number gonna be on this?
I think it's.
Twelve, thirteen?
Thirteen.
Select thirteen.
Two thirteen.
That's all that's in it, it's ninety-seven.
Okay, so they just backed down to correct the camera, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so thirteen, so has everybody read, uh, scanned through resolution number twenty twenty-five thirteen? Uh, for the insurance proceeds policy? Had entertained a motion to approve?
We approve ru- resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
Okay, it's the problem being second to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five thirteen, a resolution establishing a procedure for payment of proceeds, ventures policies in the event of higher or other damage pursuant to KSA forty dash thirty-nine oh three, and establish new procedures for collection thereof, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no, motion carried. Twenty-one sign.
Start it. So there is only ninety-seven thousand six hundred, total, okay. When is that?
Well, I think we should put in anticipated here, so isn't that the difference?
Is that, okay, so.
Yes, I think that's the difference, I'm not sure.
We had that back up.
Right. They only do once a year, so we're not gonna get another check this year.
Right, usually, if, if we had to get it back to late fall, this time we got it in the spring.
We got, I think we got that, I don't remember when we got it, but they put it in the wrong spot. We got it the first year, yeah, because I just, uh, started down here and I think I asked Lisa about it. Actually Chad had told me that it went to the bookkeepers and we should be getting a check.
Yeah, so typically they're gonna, they're gonna go gain rate one to the end of the year, so.
Sounds like.
Okay.
That's what mid states does, and he hasn't logged it. Yeah, he hasn't still logged it.
Which is, I like that.
Yeah.
Comes in on monthly basis, so when there's that's a discussion we could have, sort of reason we couldn't just do the transfer on monthly basis versus.
Alright, I've got, uh, I'm not quite sure what this is, something about Bob air or, you know, private driveway?
Yeah, so he had, he had applied or set money in the road bridge to have his, uh, driveway done with spray.
Uh huh.
Not anything to do with the county, other than the county received his money and then gave it to Scottwood Industries. And Scott, he had communicated everything with Scottwood Industries and they couldn't get any drive, so they couldn't spray it.
Well, they couldn't get any of his drive?
Correct, they refused to do it and so it's just a matter of giving him his money back.
Wouldn't that have been, should, should that have been run through the county, or wouldn't that have been just a private, uh, transaction between Scottwood and him?
It's the same thing as spraying in front of our homes, it's, it's a transaction through the county, but we, uh, we, anyone who does that is making an agreement with Scottwood Industries, not the county.
I didn't know we did, we did, uh, private drives, so that would.
Never have.
Yeah, so I, that's what, that's what I'm questioning, whether or not that would have been a transaction between Scottwood and, and Bob rather than running that.
It was, he called them, it was just simply easier to pay the county because we were doing all the private, it's the same thing.
Okay.
Instead of, uh, a private homeowner sending their money to Scottwood Industries, um, we pay the county.
Okay.
It's the same, same thing. But.
So we, we did not pay Scottwood for this and then reimburse him, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright.
So if somebody wanted to drive what you done?
I don't think it's a good idea, no, I don't, I think, I, that's, again, if they're gonna do that kind of thing, they need to go through Scottwood.
That's, that's what I would think.
And.
Just like an add-on, they would, Scottwood does the driveway or.
Right, does the road driveway, but their agreements all should be, if they wanna come back and do somebody's driveway, that's up to them.
So it's not somewhere actually, okay.
I probably should have, um, bring this up when Scott comes back, we got a invoice here from Murphy Tractor, a service invoice on five sixteen. The complaint was the brakes weren't working right on the tractor. Costs us twelve hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents for them to come out, test the brakes, seemed to be functioning okay. Blood rose sides, no air. Tightened pressure gauge, tested the pressure, no, that was all fine. I would have thought that, uh, we would have gone out and looked at that first, or it should have been the shop first, rather than having travel costs to and from the job site.
That would be, I, I think that would be a conversation with Bryson. I mean, he's the one that's approving and making those phone calls.
I understand that, but then, uh, who's in charge of him?
Right, but if it's done after the fact.
Yeah. I, I, well, I mean.
I mean, I don't know.
I guess we need to have a conversation with him, but maybe you oughta go and look at that first rather than having a twelve hundred dollar bill.
I mean, call, we can call him right now and, and find out.
Well, he's, he's coming back in, Scott's coming back in after he gets that payroll change.
Yeah.
For, so I need, like I said, I need, that just seems a little bit excessive to me.
I agree.
For no brakes. I want any brakes on my tractor, that's the first thing I do, go start checking out, see what the hell's going on, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't know that it was, it would says a tractor?
Well, twenty twenty-one John Deere three ten S L, so maybe that's a. That's an mower tractor?
Probably.
Three ten S L.
I don't think that's a mower, sixty-one fifteen D is a tractor, the, the John Deere tractor that they use with camera. And they, and John Deere tractors don't have air brakes. They have hydraulic over.
Back to Luger.
So that'd be that, that big Luger, side Luger. Yeah, I have a license, but that'd be a good question, Scott's coming back down, let's ask him why, why, uh, cause I, I'm, I don't care who it is, whether it's John Deere, I want the implement or Heritage, the service calls are absolutely ridiculous.
I know.
To get a service truck out there, you're gonna spend five hundred dollars and they don't even have to take a wrench out of the truck.
And we had a gold point inspection. What's a gold point inspection?
I think, I think the same thing.
Wow. Full multi-point machine inspection before my qualified technicians. Alright.
Well, it's, it's old as.
Hot Scott, I got it.
Can you tell me what W runs, what runs specifically?
That would be between.
What runs specifically?
What part you're needing to complete, like the.
Oh, the north, the north end.
And that would be.
Two something, two something.
Two seventy-eight to the two and a six. He said three hundred and forty-two thousand?
No, I don't think it's that much.
I thought that's what he said.
Was it?
I'll ask you when he comes back. I think that's what he said, that's what I learned at home.
I do, I do. I think.
So I believe that it's gonna be, uh, three. Two seventieth. To two eighty-six. And they've got a little, a little tab, two eighty-six where it makes the curve up there where you pass on W and then W on into white. Does that make sense?
I stole those, there might not be.
Alright, we're gonna figure out change doses here, services, I think these are all you, you services for the, uh, increases that Brooke came in and talked us about today.
So right here, two seventy and to two eighty-six?
Yep, and then there's a little curve right there.
Right here, this little portion of two eighty.
Six.
And then.
On into white.
Six to two ninety-four?
Yeah.
Three and eight miles, something like that, must be solid.
Is that fair?
Yes. On this, on that survey here, is that just in the circle area?
Yeah, they surveyed the whole thing.
They did survey.
They surveyed the whole thing, yes.
Yeah, you know, you're talking about the bill, which is a seventeen hundred dollar bill to, to Richter. For Sherway?
Yeah. Was that Sheriff's or?
This is all over road and ridge.
Road and ridge?
Yeah. I mean. The only reason I thought we were taking anything to a dealership is, is it was warranted.
Yeah.
And we have the ability to change brakes, trace electrical, and if we don't, we need to make the change, figure something else.
Yeah.
But I mean. We've got.
Three trucks.
Yeah, it's, uh. It's down the bottom end, which, of Richter, seventeen hundred and fourteen, seventeen forty-seven, the bears, on white.
All right.
We'll get back to, we'll ask those questions.
Yep.
Shelby Bachelor, what'd you say, Shelby Bachelor, she got.
Yeah, I think they moved, didn't they?
Yeah, so she's still on works, capable of, I don't know if he does it back, if he was for. Okay, so for, yeah.
He's at all.
Where she calls, she's at all.
And we have a thank you note here from Madeline Bontrager, dear county commissioners, I'm writing to sincerely thank you for awarding me the Mansurian Scholarship. I am truly honored to be selected and need the great pull for your support. Uh, this scholarship will significantly help me pursue my academic goals at K-State and ease the financial burden of my education. Thank you again for your generosity and for believing in my potential with appreciation, Madeline Bontrager. Think I wanna see this.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Read it though.
Uh, Northeast Kansas area on aging. Regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-six match dollars for Northeast Kansas area on aging, dear commissioners, you should prepare your county budgets for next year. We have the Northeast Kansas area agent, area agency on aging, say that real fast. As you support us as you have so graciously in the past, we are required to obtain local match, local cash match for our federal older Americans Act program. While we endeavor to obtain in time donations of time, goods, and services instead of cash, we are required to raise a minimum amount of cash, a minimum amount of dollars. Uh, we fully realize how tight your budgets are in the current economy. Without your cash support, we will be unable to draw down our federal dollars to help support seniors near area. For fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we are asking you to support us with $2,102. Thank you for your support. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions, or if you'd like to, like me to visit with you in person concerning our requests. Respectfully, Karen D. Wilson, Executive Director. Uh, is the 2,102 what we've been doing, or is that more or less? Yeah, so we can pull that up. Uh, we came across a thing, a couple of questions for me to find out the answers to. We have an invoice here for Murphy Tractor for, um, for what I looked at, it's a big wheel loader.
Rubber tire, rubber tire loader.
What's that?
Rubber tire loader, I think.
Yes, yes, yes. The big, yeah, the big wheel loader. Uh, three ten S. Complaint was didn't have any brakes, and when they got out there, they found nothing absolutely wrong and said it's functioning properly. Did we look at it before we called Murphy? Or would that have been supposed to be under warranty or what?
No, I think the.
That was huge, right?
The big, the big loader?
Yeah.
Uh, that would be the one.
Okay, well, so that's what I'm asking, but I'm trying to figure out why.
I, I was saying, I, they didn't tell me anything about that.
Well, maybe I have to talk to Bryson and ask why he's calling them to look at it rather than looking at it himself first.
Yeah. I mean, 'cause they didn't do anything other than test it and said it was okay, right?
Yeah, that's what, that's exactly what it says there on the second page. They found nothing wrong, tested it, and everything's good. They did a gold point inspection on it and charged us $1,200.
And then.
Yeah.
The other one I'm, I'm just curious on is a seventeen hundred and forty-seven dollar bill to Richter, to Richter, Churway. I mean, what are we sending over there? Um. Hope this will help you, this number outside here. Seventeen forty-seven. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Is that your payroll change for this?
Yeah, maybe, maybe too, the conversation with Bryson would be, um, Bryson, before we spend a ton of money on something, I'd like just, I think he should be involving you in those conversations. Hey, what do you think, so we're gonna do this, you know, instead of just pulling the trigger on some of this stuff, so maybe a conversation. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The 2,102, so it's the.
Okay, perfect. So I would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, stifling, what, appropriation for Kansas area on aging of $2,102 and no cents for fiscal year twenty twenty-six?
So good.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the, uh, appropriation for Northeast Kansas area on aging. Uh, in further discussion, all in favor, hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say a sign, motion carried. All right, do I just need to sign these?
Yes.
Okay. And these are the ones that are all good?
Yes.
Have we thought anymore about the dilemma that?
I'm talking to Kate.
That's right.
The dilemma.
For the.
Revitalization.
Re-vitalization.
Oh, yeah, we just need to get her down here.
There's a couple things that, we've got the, the property, I mean, the.
The one that's.
Pressure instrument.
Yes, but we've got it.
That was really on the night that.
And that was, that was the, uh.
The auto prepared kind of home occupation.
Yeah, okay, so do you wanna see Kate come down? And we'll see if we can get that on her desk now? I don't think we've done anything.
I think Ashley's been kind of centered.
She's coming, ten thirty, okay, maybe we can get this on her desk, let's get her.
Thank you. You, you want to be on the. Yes. Yes, name of the revitalization and the special use permit, is that it?
So.
Yep. Full claim.
Full claim, yeah, well, there's something on that.
But we approved the special use permit.
What's that?
Then we approved the special use permit.
I thought we approved that.
Yeah, we approved the special use permit. And she just wanted to know.
Okay, what?
Revitalization. I think in the end we decided to.
Well, the, uh, you could, we had the. There, yeah, okay.
I wasn't here, so.
Well, I didn't hear it, it wasn't either, so there you go.
I couldn't.
Yeah, I, I thought that we approved that.
Yeah, okay. That's another story for the neighbors. If they have any questions.
Yeah, made motion to approve spec.
Cause I think basically.
We'll, we'll, we're gonna use that first, Tom.
Oh, she's.
Step down.
Step down.
Murphy.
Hello?
We're gonna be recessed this minute until the clerk comes back. All right, we got a session. So we get some questions on the, on the list that we have, you and I discussed that day, on the ones that we found.
Yeah, that came up.
Yeah, with, um, putting on extra buildings and things like this with no building permits.
Yeah.
So, in the, in the regulations, uh, and I'll just spit, part of those are on the old ones, which just say all new construction and all improvements to exist, to existing property must comply with all zoning and building codes, rules, and regulations in effect at the time the improvements are made. Uh, and to maintain eligibility, goes on to the second paragraph, to maintain eligibility, parts must continue remaining blind with so on and so forth, just like I said.
Yeah.
Um, and that's all spelled out there very well. Then you go back to the definitions.
Page nine.
Page nine, okay. Go back to the definitions, and it says on, under five, uh, construction and improvement means and refers to rehabilitation of and additions to existing buildings or new construction or both, which are completed and qualified under the plan. So our dilemma here is trying to figure out if, if somebody puts up a building with no permit, under the rules, it says any additions to the property, but then you go back to the definition.
To get them qualified.
To get them qualified.
So if someone's building a house, they come into your office and want to apply for revitalization, you allow, however, you do whatever, and you go, oh, you built this other barn here, and you didn't, we don't show that you ever had a building permit. That either has to be brought up to snub, or they're not qualified for revitalization.
Right, that makes sense.
But if, if we see on Eagle View that somebody has been in the plan for three years, and they built a detached garage, and, oh, shoot, didn't get a building permit, didn't think about, whatever that excuse may be, does that disqualify them from the program?
It would make them, in, the way I read it, would make them ineligible because they're not complying with the zoning regulations.
But they have the ability to become eligible by paying the fine and filling out the paperwork. But it's not, because we're allowing somebody to do that on a pool.
Are, are we?
I mean, that's been a bit of a conversation.
That was a discussion, but what, the, I'm still coming back to the definition, because the way that I'm reading that refers to rehabilitation of and additions to existing buildings or new construction or both, which are completed and qualified under the plan. So if they don't, if someone's going to build an detached garage and they don't attach, attach that on to their existing.
Qualified.
Qualified revitalization, then the way that I'm looking at that definition reading, it means that we found it, you gotta pay the fine for the building permit, but it doesn't exclude them from the plan because it's not really what that definition says.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Did you read it that way?
I'm, I'm, and like I said, I've been over this and read it back and forth and upside down, and that, that's, that's my take on it, I.
And I think, I think we all agree that that's, that's the interpretation of we're getting out of that.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that they shouldn't be.
That's the interpretation that matters, correct?
Right, it, it does, but I wanna make sure that we're respecting your authority as, as the head of that department. Is that the way you read it also? I mean, or are you, I mean, or are you just looking for us to make that decision and move forward?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Um, because the way that I read the, to, to maintain eligibility, you have to stay in performance with the zoning regulations. And building something that is, they just do it without a building permit is not.
Stay in compliance. Yes. But, so that's, that's where we're, we're gonna have to, and I hate to say it, but I think right now.
I'm curious.
What do you, what are you saying? I mean, are you ready to?
I'm with you guys in the sense that I think, I'm taking zoning in the larger context of being, isn't fit for the zone. I mean, we aren't building, you know, a giant industrial structure or residential neighborhood, they're going full.
Right.
And, and, I mean, I think there's probably a dividing line where somebody with Scott would be, that, you know, if they build something that just lacks a building permit, but would otherwise fit you, which is the setbacks and all that jazz. Then they can cure that, and that would be it.
So you would agree with our assessment that it's, it's not, if it's not adding on to the qualified building?
Yeah.
Then.
I mean, I think the program is set to, that they applied, and that building that they applied for is there, and you're making sure that that's compliant, they haven't changed anything.
The only disqualifier for that program that I see, once you're in it, is if you don't pay your taxes. That's the disqualifier. Because if you don't pay your taxes, you don't get the rebate.
It's on that. But that, that's what I said, and I think we have a, between what is written in, on the old one, under section three, one and two, and then in the new one, what's written under twelve, uh, page, page five, number twelve. I think that we need to get the two definitions and this to jive if we want to, if we wanna truly make it ineligible, if they build something else on the property. if we want to, if we wanna truly make it ineligible if they build something else on the property.
Without a permit.
Without a permit.
You'd have to change that.
Yeah, we'd have to change the, see where I'm getting at there?
I mean, I'd say we leave it the way it is, we just go back to these individuals who, through Eagle View, and every time you catch one of those, you go, hey, look, if you need to get a building permit, pay the fine.
Right.
Or that could take you out of eligibility.
Maybe it's, it's that, right, that the fine, the sign is the fines, they have to get a real permit.
It is, it's double cost.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But if they don't, if it doesn't pass inspection, then you're gonna fix it or-
Again, to me, the only disqualifier, and we've dealt with this in the past, is when somebody does not pay their property taxes and then says, but I didn't get my rebate.
Right. And then for, and then for this also, if, if somebody does not-
You look at it.
Well, I mean, we still have the enforcement aspect of no matter what, I mean, whether you're in a, a property or not, if you build a building, you doesn't have a building permit.
Yeah.
You're in the same boat.
Yes.
As the person did here, it's just whether or not you're, you have an extra kind of leverage, if you will, to force them to do it.
Does that make sense to you?
I want you to clarify, Watson. So, you're saying, you're saying that to remain eligible for the plan, that if they don't have a building permit, or a building that they built after the fact-
And they were fined.
And then they're eligible.
As long as, as long as when you inspect the building, it meets the requirements.
Plan and program.
Correct, thank you.
So, that's what we're talk, I think they're talking about the same. The plan and the program only looks at what the plan and the program built.
So, here, here's, here's a hiccup. Because these aerial images don't come out immediately.
Sure.
It's not a day after kind of thing.
Sure.
So, potentially, these people can not get building permits and get through their entire plan almost before that's caught. And if they don't come in for a building permit and get charged double-
Then we have somebody who would take two years and then found out after the fact.
But I mean, I think that, I honestly believe that, uh, what we're talking about here is anybody who builds a building or a pool or anything like that, that you catch on Eagle View, you send them a letter and say, hey, we have this building on your property, there is no building permit, uh, you know, so you owe us this much money for the building permit, here's your fine.
And, and I don't, I don't think that should disqualify them from the program though.
The, not according to what I'm reading in here on the, on the definitions and everything.
Like these three right here, they're marked, we're not gonna disqualify. But if they don't pay the fine and comply with it, then do they get disqualified?
Then they will be disqualified, in my view.
They could, they could change language, right?
You'd have to change the language in order to report that.
And whether, and that's a trick too, because it's a retroactive. I mean, you're not changing the conditions of the plan, they've got just interest in it, right, because they-
It would only be moving forward on any new application.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's still, yeah, a new application for a new building, right? Not, if you built it, you gotta, you know, do whatever, gotta approve.
Let me give us your thoughts on what we're, what we're talking about, so we can make sure we get this right.
See, what's, what's the, what's the point in having that you're ineligible if you're not in compliance with zoning regulations?
Okay, from, from the way that I'm reading it, on both that and the definition, I mean, you gotta, you gotta look at both of those things.
Let me look at the definition again.
Okay.
On page nine.
Uh, the, on the old one, it's on page nine. Number five.
Construction and improvement, these definitions are defining what's in the plan. That is, construction and improvement under the plan.
Right.
These buildings are not under the plan.
That's what I'm saying. They're not under the plan, so-
So, they're-
They're, so-
They, they make this, this plan ineligible, the other buildings made it ineligible because they didn't go through the proper channels of zoning.
Do they have to, okay, do they have to, but they were at the time?
They were at the time, but later on, so that's how they got in the plan. To remain ineligible for the plan, they have to maintain compliance and zoning and all that.
Would they have to maintain compliance on a different program? So, they own two programs?
No, just on this property affected. The taxes, they have to pay all taxes regardless if it's on that property or not.
Yeah, I, I could see that.
Under protest.
Well, but no, we're just talking about, I'm not gonna go beyond that, the, yeah. What is the reach of the phrase, in compliance with zoning regulations? You know, it's kinda like, you know, in compliance with the law, if it's not speed, you're like, no, of course not. So, how far does that phrase reach? And why would it reach beyond what they put forward in the plan as the building they were constructing?
Because if they're not in compliance at any certain point on that property, then they wouldn't be eligible. I mean, that's how I'm reading the ineligible, you become ineligible if you don't maintain compliance, zoning compliance on this, this property. Otherwise, I don't know how you would phrase it to-
Well, I'm trying to look at it because I don't think I have a plan. I have a zoning code, so that's not, that's not-
Here's, here's the old, here's the old one right here.
Here's the new one.
The, the-
But I think a lot of them are on, uh-
The definitions pretty much are the same. I, I guess where I am, I'm still stuck on is-
The definition.
Addition to, yeah, addition to existing buildings or new construction or both which are completed and qualified under the plan. If those weren't, if they're, if they weren't included in the plan, then from what I see, the only thing that they're going, that they are-
That is defining the construction and the improvement for the plan. So, you can have an addition-
To existing buildings.
That qualifies under the plan.
Uh-huh.
Or you can have new construction that qualifies under the plan. So, it's defining construction and improvement for the plan. Not the entire property, not for compliance for the entire property, it's just defining construction and improvement. It could, it could mean that it is an addition to an existing building.
That is under the plan. See, that's, that's the way I'm reading it.
That would be the plan.
Well, would if you, okay, so, I build a house.
Uh-huh.
And I, I apply for revitalization and five years into it, I decide I wanna put an addition on the house.
Then you would-
Uh, that's a separate-
What one person, a person can do is, one, they would have to come in for a building permit, period.
Yes, yes.
Two, they could apply for an ex, uh, an additional neighborhood revitalization for that-
For that.
Addition.
Yes, because it's on to the existing building that's already in the plan.
But it wouldn't qualify because if they didn't have a building permit.
But when they keep, what we said, they didn't have a building permit, oh.
If it just got put on without a building permit, I would think that that would disqualify-
Automatically.
That existing, that existing, um, neighborhood revitalization plan because they didn't comply with zoning regulations.
And they're, they're trying, coming back to where it says rehabilitation of or additions to existing buildings or new construction or both which are completed and qualified under the plan. That's where I keep coming back to because it, it sounds to me like what we're saying in the definitions is-
It's what's qualifying as part of the plan.
Well, it has to be the, what was in the plan originally. So, if somebody builds a house, and then like I said-
That's the definition for the plan.
Yes, if somebody builds a house and then they put an addition on, didn't comply for a building permit or anything, but they put the addition on to the house that was in the plan, then that automatically kicks them off. But if somebody puts a detached garage on, like, like Commissioner Kelly was saying, then it's not, it's on the property and yes, they didn't go with section twelve on the new plan, but the definition doesn't, doesn't specify to me that that's what they're actually talking about.
This, these definitions are defining what can be part of the plan.
Okay.
It's, it's not talking about any other structure that's built on the property at any other time. It's not, it's not like a broad definition for all zoning.
So-
This is just definitions for this plan.
So, question. If, uh, if you go, we have a list of people. So, if we go back and we go to one of these people that, that's out of compliance and we send them a letter and say, based on Eagle View, we see that you're out of compliance because of a, you built a building-
That's where I'm saying, like-
Is that, is that, what, what I'm saying is, if you go back and send them a letter and say, look, you need to understand that you are out of compliance because of what you've done without a building permit, that will not allow you to be, remain in this program. If they, if they, if you don't hear back from them, fine, they're out. But if you hear back from them, they pay the fine and they fix whatever needs to be fixed, that helps them maintain. Keyword, maintain, right? Because in number two, it says to maintain its eligibility. I think people, you know, only, only in the, the next one down, it says any portion of delinquent payment that were taxed, assessed or special assessed shall not be eligible for any rebate. That's pretty clear cut.
Yeah.
But to maintain your eligibility, once it's found, just like the pool, uh, or just like, uh-
We didn't find that.
And then, that was a valid-
No, that was a valid, but, but violation needed one.
Yeah.
I think they deserve the right to bring in to eligibility.
Okay.
Thoughts?
Well, the, the language, looking at this, the change in language is material, but this is the old one.
That's the old one, I've got to do it right here.
Yeah, and I, I was looking at the new, I got the new one. And I think the lawyer read on this, it says all new construction and all improvements to existing property. So, you're, you're talking not about property as whole. I don't think property is even defined in this, but improvements are defined. Refers to rehabilitation and additions to existing buildings or new construction or both. So, it says, what we focus on is the construction and improvements, not the entirety of the property. The construction improvements are on the property. And they have to be in compliance at the time with the rules in that exists. Those improvements, but it doesn't say the entire property. Failure to comply with such rules and regulations will result in property no longer being eligible. If it's read, since it's a, since this is a common sentence now, you have to read that sentence in regards first, so it suggests again, it has to be the, the improvement, the construction improvements, not the property. And this one separates, was that to a one and two, it says something very different. To maintain eligibility such a parcel must remain compliant.
And what does that, what's that, property?
It says failure to comply with such codes will result in property no longer being eligible.
Property are-
Well, I mean, the equivalent, but I think the way, way it's phrased, since it's together on a sentence, you gotta read it together. It makes it so that I, 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 I think that changes the tone of it.
So, we have the ability to send a letter out, come into a compliance with your building permit, A to Z, maintain the program.
Well, I, I don't, I think, the way I'm reading this now-
Doesn't affect the program.
Yeah, but if you put forward a program eligible building and it's zoning good, you build it according to code and it's all approved, that's what they're bringing in this.
Got you.
Now, they build a separate building that doesn't comply with code, doesn't comply with zoning, then-
Deal with that separately.
Deal with that separately, it's not a violation of this, because it's not like construction or improvement, it is subject to the plan.
The only thing that could disqualify you is not paying your taxes.
Well, I, the-
So, that's number, the next one, that's-
These people would be fined, we're not gonna go back and do anything.
Other than make them-
Right.
Change and or fix by, by paying the fine and getting rid of it.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Right.
It's fine, yeah.
Hey, it's-
The baby.
It's, you know, it's your plan, so-
Yeah, I appreciate that.
How would you guys interpret that?
I think that's-
I, I think that's a general consensus that, uh, that's kind of the way we-
I agree, gives you, it gives you leverage in this certain way. You know, and I don't mind that, it's just the, you know, when it comes brought back and where you're gonna win that one. I think the judge would read that too.
And then so, if the people who do follow the rules add these, so they, you're playing on their house, let's say they own a house. They're playing on that, and then later they add garages and shops and pools, but that's not part of the original plan. And they did it because they're open to company, but that's just not part of the revitalization plan, so they're not gonna get the tax rate.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's right, that's right. But part of the, so part of the plan is just what they apply for, that improvement that they apply for.
Does that make sense to me? Are we clear as mud on that?
I, I think that the next go around on neighborhood revitalization, we may have some wording changes, something to-
If you want the leverage, then that's fair enough.
So, this ineligible, this new construction is that they do something on that improvement that was just applied for with the plan.
Yeah.
That's the way I interpret it, yes.
And it, it has nothing to do with staying in the plans on the rest of the, the property.
No.
Because one of the questions that came up last week in the original document, they're given, like, if somebody comes in and asks for that, they're given that, that information to know what keeps them compliant.
Yeah, the resolution.
Yeah.
And then they have sign on, they have written so on and so forth, right?
Yeah. I mean, that's what it says on the application, is that they have to understand what they're saying.
I think you gotta be careful here, a little, the vested right issues always there, meaning this says that the zoning code is wide, and then they build, if you go too far the other direction, you say you have to stay compliant, they have to change. You can force them to improve their property again, would them benefit?
No.
See, so, I mean, that's kind of where you can get, there's a lot of perishable involved in this kind of town.
I mean, that's, that's true with any property, you can't, just because, uh, just because NEC change your electrical code to raise their standards, not being that you're gonna make everybody in the county or everybody in the city go in and redo their electrical to raise it to the NEC code that is compliant today.
Yeah. So, you need something that says, you know, a new building or new outside of that area.
How would you deal with the Beck situation? I think it was a service, do a service, comes in, if, if energy required it to be that way?
Just hold it back.
Yeah, but that, I think it had to do with a, a building that they built behind the house.
Oh, yeah.
Second service comes in.
But, there again, I'm, I'm trying to figure out that second service because, uh, thanks for bringing that up, that did remind me. Uh, there are instances where having a separate meter is more of a convenience for the electrical company rather than anything else. I mean, and there, the example I gave was that Derek, we were gonna put that new shed in back behind. Uh, we had a city run off the pole and put a new meter in on the, on the shed because it made more sense than to try and run another line across the driveway to the shed. So, let's say sometimes that is a- So, let's say sometimes that is a matter of convenience, it's not a matter of anything else, and you're still paying the bill on, on the same property because it's probably not a different address, is it?
We don't have a separate address issue for them.
You do not have one with them. So as I say, that's probably more of a matter of convenience than anything else, I would, I would guess.
I, I understand the, the separate meters, because there are ag buildings that have separate meters in the houses. That's, that was not an issue. It's, it's a red flag, though, when we're seeing a, a permit for detached garage, and then it has sliders, it has HVAC, it has all these other things that indicate that it is more than just a garage.
I agree.
Right?
If we wouldn't want separate, separate water, we wouldn't want separate lateral field, there isn't a separate water meter, I, I don't think.
I don't know, we haven't.
So do you want to expect and send somebody out to inspect that, investigate it?
I mean, we can.
I mean, how do you, how do you break a resolution through to be done?
Right, I mean, with this accessory dwelling, it relatively new, then yeah, some more investigation that has to be done on that.
Yeah.
That, that was just an indicator when I was looking at the pictures.
Sure, sure.
Do they, do they, the accessory dwellings by regulation have to have separate utilities?
They're not supposed to.
Not supposed to, or they?
They're supposed to be an accessory to the main dwelling and not have separate, that it can be rented out, and they can be really separate and all of that. That, that was the intention of that.
And not only that, I mean, you can't operate or maintain two different residences on a water meter either. So if it's, if it's got a separate address, then that would be an indication too, that, that you're saying it doesn't.
Yeah. Because then we're, then we're looking at two primary residents on a parcel that it wouldn't be compliant on.
So you'll just have to go out and make an investigation of this one?
Yeah, that and I can call rural water district too and see if they have one.
Well, the rural water district, is it free or?
I don't know.
One.
One?
Well, that's south, south Mayana, so.
Yeah, the, the issue there is they don't have, they're not very keen to usually in policing those kind of uses, right? Because they were the guy that, if you, if they, they built the house first, I'm assuming, to have that in the unit.
But all would just be to see if they have two meters on that property.
Well, they wouldn't have, they, they would have two benefit units. And usually they're, that's what I'm saying, is that districts aren't usually ones to track around and see who's got an accessory building or a barn or something that is using a lot of water. The, the rules says they're not supposed to have, but that is, you know, if, I guess if the, if the district says, yeah, they have two meters out there.
That, that would be just the information that would be.
Yeah, and they're pretty good, yeah, they're, I mean, they have a pretty good pulse on what's going on when something gets built, so, yeah, you can call down.
You can call them to give you more information.
Yeah, and Bradrick sent me either one with no, whether it's two units.
It, it doesn't, if they do have a separate meter for that, then it's probably, you've got a very good indication as to the residential. It's not, that's just a neutral fact, because like I said, they don't, I would expect them to go out and listen to, if somebody was living there. So, cool.
Good.
Thank you.
Back out, Ted.
Appreciate it.
Is there anything else?
I don't think so. Is there anything else about this looking?
Yeah, well, you have a flooding place, yeah.
Yeah. And the, they approved the, um, special use permit for that property.
Without any additional stipulations, okay.
Yeah. Well, I just.
And you understood my, my email, what I was, so.
And I was thinking about, this is, we probably discussed this, just as an explanation to the neighbors, is that as far as we could see, there wasn't anything zoning wise that was a violation specifically. There was a distinction I talked about last time. It certainly may be a nuisance, and there's no right to have a nuisance over the zoning. So you could have absolutely everything perfect, and the zoning can still be a nuisance, right? So their complaints and their desires and their reasons, since it's not about the use, it's about the effects. So if they are harming the water, if they are maintaining a situation where there's chemicals, bleaching, or, or it's an eyesore, then it's a, it's a nuisance issue, and it's prevalent, civil matter. You guys can't, I don't think, deny the complete and compliant zoning issues because then what they're doing on the property is leaving damage in the water.
Okay, and I think that you pointed them in the direction of PDAG, I believe, right? Which I think that's, that's probably as far as we can go, is giving them that information.
Uh, yeah, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking.
Yes.
So I can go ahead and send out the letter to the children?
Yes. Yep.
My question, though, on that was if, if they wanted to add any other stipulations on that.
Meaning, planning commission?
On the special use, if the commissioners wanted to.
You got, he has, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That they wouldn't need to send it back.
Yeah, for, yeah.
To a planning commission.
Yeah, say.
They could just add on whatever else they wanted to on top of what the planning commission wanted. And send that letter out with additional stipulations.
That's my understanding of the way that it works. Otherwise, we could have a fourth row.
Well, yeah, but you could.
That's what, that's what we've done.
Do you have, you, the practice has been, the commission can have whatever they want, that's it. I mean, I think the only pickup I would have would be as if there's, if it requires specific factual findings.
Such as?
Well, like, I have a, I'm thinking of something like, you guys wanted a condition on there that, let's say they can't operate the business with, you know, more than, from summarizing the sentence. And you don't have any information concerning the systems of operating the business, right? So do you have factual information you're going to make an interpretation?
Well, sure, yeah, I mean, I, I can understand something like that, yeah.
If you're saying, okay, here's all the information, they do this, 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 and you'd say, okay, well, they say here in their application that they are fixing cars, whatever, you don't like that, here's the final information. You could do that, because you're not sending it back.
Right.
Or, or you're not making factual, if you're just saying, I'm adding on our conditions, you can do that, because technically the planning commission is just a proof, it's just a recommendation. It's not technically, they don't approve it. So at that point, I would say that's fine, I would do. You could add on what you wanted to pass it, which is concerning, is if there's some fact issue, you have to send it back.
Sure. Okay.
Another thing I just thought of, so there was, I was in a public concern about the number of, planning commission members that were there for the work session Thursday before us.
Was it a lot, I think, two, two few?
Huh?
Two, two of you or two, right?
There were four of them.
Okay.
And somebody was concerned that there wasn't a forum, but we don't need a forum, if it's just.
But you're not transacting the business.
Right, so that was.
Well, it's technically, yeah, I get it, it's not a meeting per se, but, well, I mean, but it's also not a meeting, maybe. But it was open, right? Despite the fact that it was, yeah, that, I mean, they didn't take any action, then it's not an issue. You're, you're not gonna decide anything.
Right, my thought is, if, if it's a new project, it's right in the center.
Um, Vanderpik.
Did I say that? Oh, wow.
When's your next work date? End of June. The June calendar is not, so.
Okay, end of June?
Mm-hmm, is, is Thursday, the 22nd, is that somewhere?
Mm-hmm, no. It's May.
That's May.
Not June, oh, June.
We have, we have a regular meeting, oh, I forgot.
Like planning committee or funding?
Twenty seconds, it's Sunday.
Regular meeting on the 12th, it is a special use for a private cemetery.
Another one?
Yeah, and the appeals board has in variance. And I can bring those letters down, I just forgot them. Just all this.
So is the 26th, I thought they had a work session, it's the last Thursday, isn't it?
It's the last, what's, what's the other Thursday?
Nineteenth.
It's the nineteenth.
It's June 18th, yes.
Mm-hmm, I think it might be the nineteenth.
Okay, just curious.
I'll come back down and I'll have, I'll have it right.
I guess the last one may be a great guess.
Look, there's still lumber.
So Division of Water Resources sent out a letter saying that you have to get something going by June 14th, if we're coming up on that.
Get something going.
With them, like, they have to apply.
Vanderpik has to apply to get.
Yeah, to, for fill.
Yeah.
For a fill permit, um.
See, the state doesn't care about the building, you care about the base flood.
They care about the fill, making sure that the fill is up to a certain height, and then, then we come in and say, okay, your base flood, you're a foot above your base flood, um, now you can go ahead and set your foundation, and you have to have another survey done to show that you are a foot above your base flood elevation, so now we can issue a building permit and a flooding permit.
But understand, they understand that the building is already built?
Yes.
Okay. So what, there's a, to my knowledge, without moving the building, you can't elevate it.
It's gonna have to be moved, it's, it's a foot under.
So there were, I mean, it's a process, right? So the process is to tell them that they gotta elevate it?
Wait, the process is factual finding, you can elevate it.
Sure.
Yeah.
And what authority will they take at some point? I mean, how does this progress?
Okay.
Will they have to turn the building down?
I, I would assume so, because it's a foot below the base flood elevation, so.
It's a big building.
Yeah, I'm good, that's a question, but.
Not us, not us, it's up to PDAG or.
Well, I mean, I think it's up to us at a certain point to see what, because at some point Kansas may decide that they, they're fish dry, I don't know about enforcing that, so we need to kind of back end of that, and then just, they say, well, you're not in compliance, you're not in compliance, and that's all they do, then.
Yeah.
Then it's gonna be on our plate to go next level, which is you can't, you can't get a building permit because you can't take, go up there, so.
And it's not in compliance, so you got one choice, move it, get rid of it, tear it down.
Okay.
Disassemble it?
Yeah.
Bring in the fill and the rubber encased.
Tear it down, do what you need to do first, get a backup board, get compliance.
That's right, that's a good idea.
Um, I'll show you what I received from, this is kind of a, I remember, see this time. That's what was emailed from the survey.
And so we're looking at the same project, correct?
So here's the base flood elevation, and I got a letter from the state showing me this elevation right here.
Mm-hmm.
So I got that letter from the state, and then I get this, and so it indicates, okay, this is the, the base flood elevation is 997.
This is 996.
Yeah, so the top of the concrete, 996, around elevation down there is 996.
So this, so that means this entire thing has to come up to at least 997, almost, almost a foot.
998, 96.
It's got, it's got, you have a foot above that.
A foot above that, 998, okay.
So how many feet? Are they short?
Two.
Two feet?
Two feet.
Yep.
And have we physically gone out and inspected this property?
Justin went out to get a picture of it, but we saw it here.
Does it appear to be it?
There's a heavy perch and towel, unless you walk in the building to look at it. I mean, with the vehicles lined up, trailers lined up like that, I mean, yeah, yeah. But unless you camp out and like see what's happening, it's really hard to tell.
They don't have the authority to go on property and do an inspection of an eligible property that's been built?
I'd have to check the specific resolution.
Because that doesn't appear to be ag over here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because that, that's drawing the whole question of whether it's a commercial property, sorry.
No.
Um, that there's a whole nother element to this that involves the zoning planning.
And I, I, there should hopefully be a provision, but I write an entry for county offices, that if you don't have it, it's, it still gets kind of sticky, because the fourth amendment, sure as it said, and kind of says, there's a kind of a limit to how much, how far you can go even with that kind of administrative view.
Do you think there's an indication of anything related to the camphons or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I mean, maybe you need to look into that, see what our options are in that.
Take a little deeper on that.
Okay, we're, they're expecting on the 14th, uh, probably for, nothing to happen in case you can't raise a, you can't manage.
You must submit a legal permit.
Okay, it doesn't say that. This is purely a zoning issue as far as the secondary thing, or would you say it's? Me, you're probably with the camphon team, so it's operating business in ag, so.
Yeah. Do you remember if your mother had any specific date?
No, right.
Thirty days.
Yeah.
Um, April 28th, so.
Yeah, he's out, yeah.
He never really called me back?
He never even talked, talked to me, he talked to you?
He called me and asked me what he needed to do, and I said that he needed to get an elevation so we know where this thing stands.
But he hasn't, this is.
And he just got that back to me last week. Because his surveyor wasn't available until people were allowed to get that survey.
Well, I think maybe I'm gonna keep on, keep the wagon train rolling, you might need to be, to send me that, what you got from him on the elevation and.
I'll just forward that email to you.
Yeah, and I'll say something to the effect of, thank you, but not quite good enough yet, we could say, and.
Yeah.
Basically, you can, you know, after you comply with, with the state requires, and you may be ready to talk about zoning too, but if the violations exist, and so, yeah, it's kind of a preserved thing, so, because I'd really like to see what the state that is speaking.
Yeah.
If he does make any use of it.
So I will call him back, tell him that I did receive this elevation, and that the letter and Division of Water Resource letter stated that he has to submit an application by the 14th.
Yeah, then, then you can, you can have to raise it. From your perspective, whether or not the state says good, bad, or different, at least as far as our rights, you said you've got to raise it.
But part of our regulations is that he has that, so regardless of what happens, he's gonna have to disassemble that.
Yeah, but the state, yeah, yeah, and I think we're playing a little bit of paddock game in the sense that. Yeah, but the state, yeah, yeah, and I think we're playing a little bit of patty cake in the sense that, you know, I, I, if he's gonna comply with the state, then that kind of is a domino that falls and makes everything fall. But if the state fails to do anything as a result of him not complying with the mandate or not doing anything, probably soon to be playing groundwork. Because I don't know, like I said, it could be the state just says, oh, all right. That's a violation. It's bad. And not do anything else.
I mean, okay, so that's all they do, but our requirements are still that.
And I, I think that.
That he would have to have that in order to get it.
And I'm saying, we're gonna proceed like, that's still an issue. But, you know, not complying with the state, just, you know, he's probably gonna apply for a permit, he's probably gonna kick a tan, so we're gonna keep on separate.
So.
We're, we're forcing our flooding ordinance to zone.
Would you prefer me to send a letter or to call him or both? What would you?
Well, why don't we do it, if you wanted to say, call him and say, I received it, forward it on to the county council, he's gonna respond to you, but I understand, you know, we still didn't comply with the state's request, just so we.
No, I don't think we should say, we think you should comply with the state request, you will comply with the state request and/or, otherwise you're not getting anything.
Yeah, however you feel comfortable.
Do I give him a heads up that he's two foot below?
Sure.
Because I, I would wanna know that, you know, these elevations aren't.
Right.
Yeah, so you're, just as a county matter, you're two feet below, you, the state says, it's what the state says. You know, you pass, so he doesn't have illusions about, if he passes the state test, he's good about it, so he's fine.
That's it?
Or now.
Okay.
Or now.
All right.
All right, thank you for your. Well, guess what, you're up.
Woo-hoo.
How are you?
Getting better, so that's a good thing, just, you know, I don't wanna have to give up doing what I love.
Understanding.
So Ashley was double booked, she didn't realize we had a Jackson County Lifestyle Magazine content meeting today, so. Um, but let's talk about something fun. This is our annual push for sponsorship and support, as you know, things don't carry very cheap. And we just, you know, any help that you could seek, but. Yeah, so I need to help us put them down, we appreciate it. Um, we've got live music vendors, um, we are tentative with gates opening at three thirty, we're still in the confirmation stage. Because right now we have Thunder Cover and Jack Wick in ears, but there might be another artist that we're gonna put in before, which is why we might need to be a little earlier. Jesse Kimmy is gonna do fireworks, he's been doing it as long as I've been here, so I feel like it's just, we've got a really good relationship with him. He tries to keep the prices free as much as we can down.
Right.
We don't know, um. What was I gonna say? Really, this is just, you know, our, we believe, I, for one, I'm just glad I get to come and sit before you, it's the first time in a long time to see you guys. But I'm really looking forward to July to live, this is one of my favorite events and this is, it's getting bigger and better and it really is something that we're, we can be really proud of and people come from all around and it's just, I love it, let's just hope this year Ashley doesn't stop and hold it right for me.
Yeah, there you go, I remember that.
That was, oh, and then, and then I told her to get off of it, and you know she did it.
Yep.
She's stubborn as all get out, but.
Sure, I'm looking on the appropriations sheet for the, I don't see what we, it doesn't indicate what we did last year for them, I know. We had the whole fireworks? Something out on there?
Is it probably out to the chamber? Yeah, we don't, it's not in the chamber. Oh.
I think the parks are right, I don't even see, I don't want to, we did five hundred dollars for the toys fireworks.
I was last minute on this meeting, so forgive me for not being more prepared and I'm not for you, I called it down.
You're good.
I'm guessing we did five hundred.
Um, yeah, I, I don't know, I don't remember.
We're still coming down on glory days.
Which, what, where are you at?
I was, you know, I, for the competition that we had in the weather, you know, we didn't get as many cars, but I think that everybody that came had a really good time.
Yep.
I just, I don't think I could get things, I just.
It was a good crowd.
It really was, and they were positive and just in a good mood, you wanted to be there, it just made me so happy. Looks like in July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, or July, July, it says seven hundred fifty dollars.
Hello?
Seven fifty? I think we had our sponsorship levels lower and that would have been maybe the max sponsorship last year or something.
Two hundred?
I said, so it was seven fifty, maybe last year you did the five hundred plus two hundred fifty, you do the seven fifty.
I think what you were saying is that their sponsorship levels were lower last year.
I think because we're trying to offset the cost of the bands and the, the people that do the sound and stuff, so this is what we sent out to the general public. But, you know, as whatever you see fit, we will be grateful to receive.
What's the Parks and Rec done sitting at right now? What do we got, number done?
Let's see, I don't know what's in that.
Go ahead.
This is the megaphone person.
I believe seventeen.
But I don't have what's in.
This isn't enough to date.
Five thirty-one, yeah.
You have the treasure report? That's what I got here, it has a thirty-two thousand.
We had thirty-one, brought in twenty-one, spent twenties, we're thirty-two.
And that's what's in cover?
I don't have what's in cover, I don't know if, what's, we haven't paid out yet. I think it's pretty up to date.
That's, this one, oh, that's.
This is just the treasure report.
Oh.
It's got the grant on it.
Yeah.
Starts with thirty-two.
Okay.
On the person.
Exactly, seventeen bucks.
Do you have the, the, uh, the.
That doesn't show it's. Thirty thousand.
Okay, so.
Thirty-two, what do you think of this?
We're just wondering if anything is in there. So just a second, it's a bigger. How much do we pay for it?
Five hundred.
I think it's two seventy-two.
That's. And we already paid, so those are the, 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 we just, we already paid, like, like second Saturday, not the Saturday that's Friday. We're doing, uh, the historical, we're mixing, kind of like encouraging people to kind of visit, it's, we're on Jackson County. And then to come to this square and just enjoy the nice splendor and the beautiful square that we have and I think sometimes it just, maybe a little reminder, but.
She's already got it set up, so that man, employee, writing in historical society or.
Already up.
That, that.
She has it, she has the encumbered for the man, employee, writing in historical society.
So what, what does that leave us for a total?
The thirty-two thousand.
Okay, so that's already set up in there to come out. No reason we can't do fifteen hundred?
That's, yeah, I mean, I, this, this brings a lot of people to the county, I know they don't just come holding, uh, because the orb hunt is going on and everything too, so I know that that is a, that's a big thing, so.
Yeah, so I, I.
Well, the orbs have to really come on with the college kids, that's like thing, like now that it's like their day trips and they like go out and try to find the orbs and it's like a big thing and I think that is so fueled or made up into that, so I'm excited.
I'd move the, uh, we had an entertainment sponsor for fifteen hundred dollars out of Parks and Rec, uh, alcohol portion of the, the tax money that comes in for that.
Second.
Okay, so probably moving second is that we become an entertainment sponsor for fifteen hundred dollars for July in the lead, uh, out of Parks and Rec. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And give the clerk's office and they will get you taken care of.
Yes, they will. I couldn't get out of the way.
All right. So. Just looking here at our.
Can I have some of your C I Z?
Oh. Yeah, here. There you go.
What was the valuations last year?
That's what I was just looking at, valuations last year, if I'm looking at this correctly.
One fifty-four, something?
One fifty-two, eight thirty-five, three thirty-five.
How many, do you show how many bills we had last year, Mark?
Uh, seventy-two point four five from Jackson County.
Right, okay. I had the seventy-two, I wasn't sure about. Thanks.
Because we raised it half, uh.
Yeah.
Point oh five.
Right.
Yeah. So I'm glad we got this in, so we can start getting some ideas of what we're looking at, how we're handling this.
Do you know terrorists are by turn in their budget request?
I don't know. I don't, I don't. Did you say that the utilities at your run were going to be that way now? County is expensive or residents?
No, it wouldn't be at our expense.
The residents?
They're in, they're in our right, I'm saying, as far as, I'm concerned, is residents or utility or equipment. Right?
Just checking.
Does that sound logical to Utah?
If they, if they have no utility?
No, there are, there are utilities, out of here around, there are utilities that are in the right of way that need moved.
Yeah.
So it would not be at the county's expense, it would be either at the.
Where it is.
Well, there's, I believe he said there's a power pole.
Yeah, power pole.
And I'm guessing, I'm thinking from what he said, he said there was a, and I'd have to go out and look to double check, and you might know from driving up around the circle, he said there was a big electrical, or a big utility box, so I don't know if that is a transformer.
It's probably an underground.
That's what I'm thinking, it's an underground.
I was seeing water is, even if it's in, goes right away, if there's ninety-five percent of districts, these are some private stuff to pay for, so, yeah, but, but, yeah. They gotta move, they gotta pay to move it.
Yeah, so it shouldn't, it's not.
Are you widening the right of way or are you?
What's that?
Are you widening the right of way?
Well, we're trying to make things, yes.
No, we're not, no, we're not.
We're not widening the right of way, we're making even our right way.
It's already our current right of way.
Okay, yes.
And in, in order to make the road the way it needs to be, we need to utilize our entire right of way, so.
Okay, and then, and then did they have a, it was quiet today, a utility easement?
I'm not sure, there was a lot of unknowns.
There's a clock back here.
Is that?
Your run?
Yeah, it's been on there.
Just kind of notice that one.
We can get you a bigger map if you can't see that.
Well, I can, I still can't read the fine print, but, okay, so where's this, is this?
It's up here.
At the circle, okay. So there.
Did he, did he copy what you brought today?
No. The survey, no, he did not.
So twenty, there's a twenty-foot easement that adjoins the right of way already.
Come on in, Lisa.
See, four. Okay, so they have a twenty-foot, uh, utilities with the adjoins, road right of way, so they're.
They have adjoins, road right of way, so that's, that's twenty feet past. Okay, all right.
So if they're not, if they're in the road, they're not in that, they're expensive.
All right. Lisa, what you got?
I have a question about the progress on the tax sale.
Okay, um, I have a list of. Let's see, one, two. Three, four, five, I could probably assert the search.
For the.
Because I think the first service was ineffective.
Yeah.
And we could possibly.
That's when we get that figure.
There's a couple others that we can't serve because they aren't, and there's one guy who's died, and I gotta go upstairs and check. Fred Keller. He died in twenty-two, but probably still his name, I gotta check to see if probate's filed yet. So I'm gonna issue, I'll assume it's of those couple ones that I have, to serve them correctly, and then once I get those corrected ones, either denied or back, then I'm good to go. And I'm assuming if it's probate based, then you might have talked about all the, the, the state, or if there's no state file, I don't know, at that point we'll get all the publication.
They're, the family on that one, they want nothing, and they're, that's a lot, I think that tons of people calling on.
Well, because it's a nice place, it's a good place, but it's just not, nobody stepping up. What's the, it's a property, Amelia, it's Amelia that the guy named Fred Keller owned, um, I guess he was alone. His spouse died a while ago, he died. And nothing's doing with house and everybody, they have, he has a couple brothers and sisters with him. Most of them live out of, out of state. For what, maybe he didn't have a will, maybe he didn't have a. I don't know, but I'm gonna go check after then, go check for. I don't know, but I'm gonna go check after then, go check for, for it, see. If it doesn't sound like, assuming we got notice, it probably would've been done.
There, yeah, I, we're a very piece of metal, place in, always returning. I've never.
Yeah, the sheriff says that they taxed it on the door, but there was already something from the federal tax doors.
We're gonna check.
I think at a certain point, if there's no estate, then we've done, couldn't rely on the publication notice. Um, but the ones that I've got, who, I got your email, the one person who.
I have eighteen properties.
Yeah, well, one of them, we also got, I gotta check on the bankruptcy. I think it's, they, they were served, but they got, that's, uh, knocking in or something, through your core.
Yeah, I don't have anything on him for bankruptcy, that's.
I'll do another search for that, just to check it out, but, states pads. Um, there's one that they served, Mary Ann Hughes. She lives in Pika, so I'm gonna try it. I'm gonna have an A L S petition to me, and I'll try their server. Um, Paul Vorba. That's a tricky one, because he's not at that pile of having, not even there, but he has a company in Lawrence that he owns. I'd like to try. Vicki Nelson. And, uh, Elliott Valley are two folks who have. Properties that could be tacked in there, so I'd try that. One last thing, we need a result there. But, I mean, it's last ditch effort, so we, what we gotta do is we gotta exhaust efforts to serve people apart from the publication. So we give a, technically newspaper notice is good for everybody, because they, they own property in county, and they're supposed to get the county paper, that's like two hundred year old tradition. So once we get, but I wanna have a little extra, just so nobody sits out there and says, well, I was, you know where I was, and he didn't direct it out. It was a corporate, and, and, so, let's get that down, journalize it, and we'll be ready to go on the court house steps when the sheriff does his statement. We got last round, was there a sale at this point, or something?
It was, I don't know, there was a sheriff's sale, I don't know what it was. I don't know what it was.
Yeah.
I can see a bunch of people down there, but I don't know what it was.
They, they'd be back for, um, murder, what was it?
All right. All right, what it was. So will you?
I'll, I'll be issuing, I'll be getting those set up in the next day or two, and I'm gonna go check upon it.
Yeah.
Keller.
Cause then do you have to publish them again so many times, no?
Well, I have to publish the notice of sale, when the judge said we could sell it.
I got to put the properties listed.
Yeah, the legal could be new list, but.
Yeah, right.
Got to blank out if you have a pay.
Right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Have you finished signing those? Is this in there?
No, no.
Was it inside there, so I think he may be marked.
Yeah, I, no, I haven't finished signing.
I'm sorry, he's marked and he left off it.
What was the, what was our total budget last year, do you remember? Trying to give an idea of what we're gonna be doing this year. Just getting right in frame.
I didn't even realize the marker came out. Can I have some of these July Julie here?
For what?
July Julie, thank you.
Oh, here, both.
Todd, the only force today?
We covered most everything, and. The only thing that passed ahead is, I don't know, even relevant.
Look you down.
But.
Just taking this opportunity before you're here.
Okay. More certifications of duties, buildings?
So you guys really don't need those letters, do you? Cause I told you about the work.
Yeah.
Anyway, there's. I submit that every year, the final scope of work.
Okay.
Tells you all the numbers and.
And this is what you send to the state?
So, I have to do a preliminary one in April.
Okay.
And those numbers change, like in that, that table.
Yeah.
And then I do the final line before June first or July first.
Okay.
And that's what, it just lays out. My scope of work. Um, you all were talking about sending out letters to those that put up buildings and didn't get a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the majority of the ones that we find are ag buildings. So, do you still want us to send out letters to those because we pick them up and we put them on? They still are required to get a building permit.
Yes.
But they are not charged for that, there's no fee, so there's no doubling of the fine, or doubling of the, the fee. And, and.
Even, even if they.
Or you can set one, but we don't have anything set.
Well, I, personally, I would, I would think that if they were supposed to get one and they didn't, and our normal, an ag building doesn't have to get one, is that what you're telling me?
They do have to get one.
But they don't pay for it.
They don't pay for it.
Okay, so, from my way of thinking on that is even if they don't have to pay for it, for getting it, they didn't get it, so they're gonna have to pay for it.
Okay, so you don't.
For the regular price.
You don't have anything yet for those, those types of penalties.
So you have any more to add to that?
So, ag building apparently does not have to pay for a building permit, but they got, they built these buildings without getting a permit. So, if the, if the fine for doing something like that is double, if they don't have to pay originally, then they have to pay for the building permit, that's their fine, paying for the building permit, or putting up a building.
To a double zero.
No.
Well, he wants, he wants to put one on.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm going to put the one on it.
But how do we do that if, I mean, we don't have that writing, how do we?
Then we need to set that up.
Uh, that, I mean, moving forward, we can do that, yeah. Uh, if you want to put some sort of a, a fine on for ag buildings?
I, I think it needs to be, because otherwise it's gonna keep going like that.
Okay.
Uh, I, I really do, I think, you know, if they're not getting some, and you're two or three years behind the process, finding an equal view, then.
In all honesty, I think, I think the fine for, uh, building permits ought to be higher than what it is, and that would curb some of that if we possibly, you know.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, yeah, so let's, let's talk about that, see what we can do.
I mean, I guess some research would be nice, uh, come back and show us what maybe the four surrounding counties are doing. You know, are they a lot higher, or, you know, on a?
Well, it's gonna have to be in the zone surrounding camps, correct?
Yeah.
Cause Ashland's not zone.
Correct.
I don't know, is Brown zone?
No.
So, you're gonna have to pull up similar type county, yeah.
Sorry, are you talking about just the building permit fees in general?
Building permit fees and what they're charging.
Well, we raise those what last year, year before last, to make them.
Comparable?
Comparable, just not on ag buildings.
So maybe there's nothing on ag buildings, but we create a fine for ag buildings so that that's not becoming. Well, this is, what I'm reading here is that basically they're accepted from the provisions, general provisions is only. So they're not. So, but, the, the building permit isn't a separate, correct? I mean, yeah, building code is different from.
Yeah, requiring a building permit is, is in there.
Okay, all right, so.
Um.
I mean, if they're completely exempt, and then there isn't, what's the basis for making them get a permit first? That's a good question.
Yeah.
Cause it's. So ag buildings don't need to necessarily have a building permit, it's based on what you're. Well, if they're not required of building permit, then there's no basis to make them, and there's no basis to even, I mean, if it says, if it says that agricultural properties can get, have to get a permit, if they, the fee is waived in the language. Is that what ours says? Well.
That's gonna, that's what you're saying.
Um, you have your book? Page D, some of those zoning regulations.
Sheriff. Board.
Um.
That's their way.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, J T?
Here's, here's the problem with not having agricultural buildings, um, get a building permit, and. When people come in for ag buildings, I tell them that if it's ever not going to be an ag building, it would have to comply with setbacks.
Oh, so, good read, yeah.
So, it's good to conform to the setbacks.
Okay.
Cause otherwise, you may get in trouble down the road.
Well, setbacks should be in place anyway, by ag building.
Well, grade, grade fourteen.
Page J.
Eighteen.
Fourteen C.
Of, what section? Zoe Bragg?
Zoe Bragg.
Section five. Fourteen.
Is there a separate building permit section here in the zoning?
Well, look under article thirty-five, page one seventeen. Um, it talks about enforcement and application requirements.
Yeah, I'll get it, so.
In the building from an application part, it doesn't exclude agricultural buildings? At the top in section two, it excludes the agricultural use. For zoning from lands and occupancy permit.
Well, okay, so, any questions, because I was, I'm used to two things. One being, the building permit, which is building code, right, function, which is electrical, plumbing, all that it has, and then this is the zoning occupancy permit. It should be something separate, right?
Well, we don't have zoning codes.
We don't build.
We don't building codes, we don't do building codes, but we have zoning.
So the only permit they would be required to do to be good with a county would be this occup, the zoning, zoning compliance and occupancy permit.
Yeah.
Okay, so. So there wouldn't be a reason for you guys to issue separate building permits, I just didn't have, at least, especially new, you say building. So, uh, fully just ag use, no residential use, just ag use, and then build a building, build it once a year. They would still need zoning compliance and occupancy permit that you would prefer charging them.
Okay.
Okay, is that up here somewhere?
No, it's on the application, packet instructions.
Okay, awesome, okay, well that's.
But it's not a part of.
Yeah, it's a sheet. Let's see, it says whatever fee is, is directly. Where is it, and where does it say it's double that, is that again on the sheet?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you guys established by resolution of fees, not this, so it's not zoning change. If you wanna change the fee structure, you can do that by resolution of the, the application.
Yeah.
And, I don't think that's a problem, I agree with you, it seems to be a discretion. So is that something you wanna go ahead and have it together?
I think, I think it'd be a good idea.
What, what do you want the, the fine, or the fee to, fine to be, cause there's no fee, but there would be a fine.
There would be a fine, uh.
Four hundred dollars, that's what the.
Do you wanna pull, pull up the instructions, it also has a fee schedule on, uh, our website?
The application works in.
Maybe in there, the instructions, it's separate from the application.
Yeah. Building permit instructions?
Is that on your apartment, or gender?
Yeah. And then it should be forms on the right-hand side.
Do we have a resolution that establishes the fees, or is?
That was done a couple years ago.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take a look, if, if, personally, there's got to be a first, let's see.
Okay, so, filing fee then, for a hundred thousand dollar plus, it's two hundred dollars.
Place where it's, talks about, that's on the line, it's in the instructions, and it's, it's either in red or it's gold or something.
Any person, firm, corporation, due perform the cause to be performed, any work in which a zoning compliance certificate is required prior to obtaining such certificate shall be subject to double the normal fee for such purpose. And then the penalty shall not relieve any person, firm, or corporation from full compliance of the requirements of the zoning compliance certificate procedure in the execution of work. So, we should be able to put in there then, under the penalty section, that if you. If you have an ag building that you put up without a permit, without obtaining a no cost permit first, then your fine will be X number of dollars. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's kinda ridiculous, I think, that, uh, most people know that counties, um, should. Uh, and if they're, if they're trying to do it, skate under the radar, they're gonna get caught eventually. So, yeah, I mean, four, five hundred dollars, I don't think is a, is an unreasonable ask.
I think for most people though, I don't believe most people are building, doing that with the intention of doing it on purpose. I think most people go, oh.
I think most people go, oh, I'm gonna build a bar down here, let's get to it and you get it done.
Yeah.
Or the.
Well, I know that there are several.
Just relying on the contractor to do it.
Yeah.
But it requires that the homeowner sign that application, so I think there's a lot of.
I think in some situations, but I bet it's very few, the people are going, I'm gonna stick one to them, they just, I have to believe most people are honest with.
Well, there, there are a lot of complaints that you see that in here, well, why should I have to pay to put up a building on my land? Well, that's, you know, I, I'm sympathetic to that, I agree with that in certain instances, but it is rules and we're a invasion of rules and laws of, you know.
No, I agree, I mean, the building permit is, the real reason is so we get on the tax roll, so we can properly tax people, that's the whole thing.
Yeah.
They want good roads, ambulances, and a sheriff, that's what it requires.
Yeah.
We all have to play the game.
Not by meeting their setbacks.
And they're meeting their setbacks, they're not interfering with a neighbor or, you know, doing something that's gonna disrupt a neighbor or the county or, you know, building a society together.
So what are, what are we thinking on putting in there?
I'm comfortable with doubling whatever, uh, uh, any, anybody else goes.
Basically, they, they don't pay it first, but if they miss, then they pay in, so basically it's, okay.
And, and that's something that I think would be good, that we push out on our Facebook page, again, just letting everybody know.
Yeah, it needs to be publicized somewhere so people actually realize it and know it.
Right, and we'll make sure that it's in minutes so that the whole reporter can get it out that way. I mean, those are reliable sources of getting things out, you know, I don't know, using unreliable sources is a good way to go, but those two, those two would be good.
We can put something on our page too about.
Yeah, that's a third reliable source.
So like, what's the, what's the next thing you send out from your office, like?
That's not until, how many we should notices?
Which is when?
Well, personal properties in February, but real estate, it's, uh, March.
But see, wouldn't that be good, just to even put something in all those notices, so there's some kind of notification to ask people?
Who's got to stuff that in there?
Oh, we do.
It just goes.
The rest of it. Yeah, we would, we would just.
Borrow the machine upstairs.
There you go.
What machine? You have a machine now?
Well, I don't know that she's ever gotten one, but a letter stuffing machine and, and.
Was it letter stuffing or letter folding?
It's folding.
I think it's folding.
Yeah.
I thought it was gonna have the ability to.
I think it was.
Into an envelope too.
Yeah, I think, I don't know.
It was supposed to, Kenny was gonna help facilitate some of that funding for that.
So the other offices could use it.
Absolutely. Well, let you know when it comes in.
But then she kind of meant by the wayside that she was gonna keep it herself and, um, remember she was gonna pay for it. I don't know.
No, I, I thought we were.
We haven't heard any more.
It's all right, we're used to it.
Yeah.
It's fine.
All right.
So.
Okay.
We put order come.
All right.
Yeah. I think people, you know, it's just.
No, we're just gonna be, we're gonna change the finance.
No, I'm just asking her what she thinks.
You gotta plug here.
It's called tabs like I have.
I don't like you to say that, but I, does that include, uh, each, uh, one, one, two, or just, I mean, because we're gonna get into these sections and, uh, you know, we go to the right section and it goes over, I think.
So you have your zoning rights.
We've got one here in each section.
I thought that we were reading.
Only in that, correct.
That if you were building, we were the working, we're on the.
Yeah, I guess, uh.
She was gonna kind of take the ball.
Doesn't have more fees in it.
Oh, my.
With the little contents that are numbered and then you can, you can, um, or. Yeah, it takes little contents and that's it.
Correct. Yes.
What's the permit?
And.
Okay.
Tab should be right there.
Are they? There's several that just say, I think, because of.
All right, we'll, I'll see what I can find now.
Okay.
Get back into it.
Well, you had mentioned that you wanted to send out letters to those people that we find and then.
Right.
It can be like a three-year difference, I mean.
Because of when you take pictures.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, when would you like me, you want me to start that as, now, this year, that I probably find?
I think so, yes. But I think that is perfect.
Yeah.
The only time we've really done that is when we found a house. Or something super good like that.
Okay.
Um, it's just the, out of the fact how you dropped that letter.
You want a form letter or?
Huh?
You want a form letter or you want to mask the letter from county?
Well, I will.
You first want a nice letter.
Well, my, apparently my nice letter is not nice.
Well, I've never had a nice letter in my life, so, uh, it's just a matter of perspective. Mine's worse.
All righty.
Thank you. What's that?
Yeah, visitor, an honorable visitor.
Oh, yes, we do. How you doing, buddy?
I'm doing great.
Did you have anything for us today?
I passed my kidney stone on the circuit.
You did what?
Passed my kidney stone on the circuit.
I'm so proud of you.
Yeah, I'm doing great. I got pictures of it, isn't that?
Oh, yeah, not good. You're weak.
All right, we've got minutes left to blink. Well, um, did you have anything else?
Uh, just to, I don't know if we want to talk about it, but, um, just so you know, from November twenty, we're gonna build, the tribe has passed in late February, the franchise ordinance is gonna amend all utilities in the, either the area, the reservation or trust lands, to pay them a franchise fee and also to make all lines that are, are what, that are utility lines, subject to use by another, by the tribe or any utility that they create, so.
And that's enforceable how?
Well, that's, uh, that's gonna be an interesting question, I suppose, I, I think there's a number of, number of legal issues here, but, um.
I'm telling you, so can you email me that information, I think?
I, I sent it to Greg.
Okay.
So, what, did I send it to you? Did I send it to you?
Oh, yeah, you, you sent me a letter saying that they had denied, or were curious why we denied the.
That was me, yeah, they, they, but with that email, he sent the.
The franchise?
Yeah, he sent the franchise, and it's on, online too, it's.
Where that water can get off, it's expensive. So is electricity.
Yeah, and then we're starting to see whether it's just one water district or about twelve, because it's a, thirty, about thirty.
So did they send that notice to all three water districts?
Not that they noticed, no.
Just to you?
Just to me. Said he wanted to meet the president.
Interesting.
Talked on the phone, discussing.
We can meet it, I, I mean.
Well, I think it's probably just me and Aaron discussing, hopefully.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, I think Katie achieved that little sense of, of that, so.
That's.
Especially. So, yeah.
All right.
You guys don't have any, so you're, you're free.
We're good to go.
Yep.
What about energy, though?
I think we should talk about a post, um, use for our roads.
Yeah.
The lead into the reservation.
I'm up for anything.
I feel like I'm causing all kinds of trouble.
You are.
Yes, I am.
I'm just curious, who did they file that with? EPA?
Probably anybody that I know of.
Oh, so that falls back to that, no, not having a treaty.
Well, or, or, they are a sovereign, they should decide their own laws and they decide their own law and, but it is the law.
Yeah, okay.
And the question kind of being, I think, related is whether that applies to trust property or not.
That's the key right there.
Yeah, because there's a specific provision about the zoning, this is rag, about the zoning, and obviously there's, I mean, we have open questions about rigor, okay, police by jurisdiction, it's theirs.
And, and the, the biggest key to me on trust property is trust property off the reservation. That's the biggest key, by the way, I think.
I, I mean that because I think.
Yeah.
I just think reservation, reservation, that's clearly something, and trust property off the reservation, except, but the problematic.
Uh, before you go, have you ever heard of even back, BMS?
Nope.
Then could you send them another letter, uh, just, we're gonna do something?
Yeah.
Before we can even begin negotiating?
Yeah, that's fine, um, I was thinking upper point, if they don't do anything, it's just kind of, when they renew, it might be, well, you didn't send us the stuff you wanted, so, but I don't know how.
Yeah, it's a fortune.
What our leverage is, and that's a certain chance to go to somebody else.
I mean, I don't think we're asking for a whole heck of a lot, so.
Okay. Came out of here a long way with some head coming in, and it's not fair.
That's the way that it usually works.
Yeah. Must be the first of the month.
Let me know when everybody's had a chance to read the minutes. Thanks, sir, we'll see you later.
Can we have, uh, for school?
Yeah.
All, all three, as of when I came out here, all three positions at all three schools.
Right.
So who, oh. Uh, Michelle Cochran. Phil Brighttown.
We do, yeah, Art.
Uh, David Holley. He's already on board.
Gotcha.
In his position as, um, the district, he ended up running the same, Dr. Coop, and then Mitch Backley did, right, position.
Okay.
And this morning, um, Colton had, um, Brian Phillips and Trent Kean, who filed for this to have heard one, and sort of Terry Clark.
Oh, yeah.
And then all three companies were, uh, gotcha.
But maybe they're more announced, we don't have any priors. We should not, unless a whole bunch of people filed, since we've been acting. We need a lot.
An email, I got an email back.
Uh huh.
That Headlight Assembly to the, from Doug Rett.
Headlight Assembly?
It was thirteen hundred dollars.
For just the part?
Just the part, they charged another three hundred and some dollars to the Assembly. I can go on, uh, carrie.com, truck ID, uh, rock auto, last fit, I can buy it anywhere on there for four hundred dollars or less, and I can install it.
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah, that's, that's not good.
Evan, just, the word weather, it's W H T A, instead of weather.
For a moment?
Oh, I remember, it says weather.
Oh, wait, yeah, okay.
It's a long word. So I'm gonna, I think.
Is he changing them? I just brought them. I just brought those to give to Scott or whoever, because I, because they existed, I didn't know if anybody knew that they existed.
The oversight permits?
Yeah.
I think, didn't he get lost? We, the news gonna look at?
Well, it looks like Todd's looking at it, I didn't know if that's because they changed or what, I just got it out because I didn't think anybody knew that they existed.
I don't think they knew, he knew they existed.
Scott was supposed to go back and reach out to the company that was asking and verify what the width is that they're coming through with.
Yeah.
Because the state of Kansas doesn't let up line anything over sixteen foot.
So we're not changing our permits or process.
Not that I know of right now, no.
I gotcha.
No.
I didn't understand that basic, because I didn't, uh, what does have you with the resolution and permits I can do?
I'm moving to, uh, if you're ready for motion, I'm moving to approve the minutes for, um, May twenty seven.
Second.
With corrections?
Did you, I didn't.
Yeah, I'd love to have one correction.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Spell.
Yeah, with.
Okay. All right, we've moved the problem, moving section to approve the minutes of May twenty seven, twenty twenty-five, with corrections, any further discussion? Carry none, all in favor, say aye. Although, same sign, motion carried. Uh, I had text Kristi asking what the budget was last year, and just so we, you know, we got valuations here, we kind of start playing with those, uh, that was eleven million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars is what the budget was last year. Like I say, since we got valuation, we kind of play around, start playing around with that, seeing where we're at. She did indicate that ambulance service goods up three hundred thousand dollars this year, or three hundred thousand dollars, goes up three percent this year, and I believe that that, that number she gave me is the, what the increase will cost, so, or what the total will be. So, like I say, we need to kind of figure on that, uh, see what we can come up with.
So say that again, the ambulance service.
Ambulance service goes up three percent this year.
This year? So it's not this year that their contract's up?
I believe this is the final year of their.
I don't think it should be.
Okay, three percent, okay.
Yes. So, like I say, I'd like to get some information from them, so we can start planning ahead for next year's budget, because something that big, I think, we need to really look at and, and get a handle on what we're doing right now, so. So.
When I asked Erin about the C I C thing, she said that the, the registered deeds office had C I C prior to us getting C I C payroll, and there was going to change in pricing.
Okay.
When we added payroll, so she didn't think that there was a tie to that, she'd have to look into that. However, we are using their server, so we will have to possibly get a new server.
For a new server or use?
Yeah.
Existing space within.
Yes, we have to look into that. It could, there could be a cost per server, but she doesn't think there's a cost for the yearly fee.
Okay, so do we want to table this discussion until next week till we get some more information on that?
For sure.
Okay. There's, there's possible other, other costs that are not going to be included, so we need to, we need to get a handle on what's gonna happen first, so. Uh, would you communicate that to Jerika and let her know that we're still digging?
And so when you have payroll problems and Mary called C I C or whatever, do you have a, do you have a long wait time for it to get back to her?
I don't. I mean, it's usually the same day.
Sorry.
I don't know, you have to ask Mary.
I just wondered what the difference was with registered deeds and payroll, I'm never, anybody complains about the payroll that they didn't take care of or services.
Sounded like, I mean, Christie wasn't.
It might be two different.
Departments.
Two different departments, yeah.
I don't know that.
Gotcha.
You have to talk to Mary specifically, I, I've never heard them talking about changing providers. This contract says that it ends at eleven fifty-nine P M on the thirty-first day of December, two thousand twenty-five.
So. Maybe we should have, uh, them gather some information, then have either Christie or Mary or both be out here next week to have that conversation.
Yeah.
But do we need additional server, what's that gonna cost?
That's, that's what we need, okay.
All those types of things.
So maybe they can start doing a little research this week to see.
They're looking into it already.
All right, like I say, we're, we're gonna table this until next week, uh, to Jerika, because, uh, I want to make sure that we know what all the associated costs are gonna be before we make a final decision on that.
I'd also like for next week's meeting, information on, um, what increases, I, I know that department heads have already asked for increases in payroll and what those are. Christie briefly showed me that, uh, if she wants to email that out ahead of the meeting, that would be great. Uh, but I think that's a conversation we need to have, um, because that includes.
You said it's all expenses or just the payroll, what did you say?
Well, so I, I understood her to say that there were some departments that were saying, okay, I have to increase, I'm gonna use Jerika's office to, I have to increase my budget because I want to increase or move people up the pay scale.
So just payroll related?
Correct.
That spreadsheet, because I think Mary has a whole payroll.
Right, she has one that includes benefits and everything, um, I just need to see what these departments are willing to increase. There are several departments who are wanting to increase it.
Do we have a timeframe for when department heads are supposed to turn in their proposal budgets?
Yeah, it was May, May one.
It was in May, I think.
So, so we should have those, I would kind of like to see the.
I think she knows, yeah.
Next week too, because, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here just doing some rough numbers from, uh, what we got.
State revenue neutral, that could be clear down in the sixties.
Sixty-two something, I think, wasn't it? Is that what it was?
I think it was that, really low, no, but, yeah.
I don't, I don't know, we, like, like I say, last year we were at seventy-two point four five.
Yeah.
So it's. Well, yeah.
The, what I'm thinking, what I'm seeing on here is EMS contract ends in twenty-five, December third.
It ends, oh, it's EMS contract, I thought you were talking about the C I C contract.
That's what I saw.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said C I C too.
So, yeah, so that's gonna have to be negotiated now, and so we're gonna have to know that for next year.
So why do you say it goes up three percent? At what point is about three percent of the contract ends? I think that they're right, it's some confusion, that's where I was, I just.
Well, like I say, that's what.
That's what I thought, that it ended.
So it will be renegotiated at this point?
But why did they say it goes up three percent?
That's, that's what she wrote on here.
That's how it was.
That's what it went up.
Okay.
But it started, but to me, uh.
I'll get some clarification on Christie, from Christie on that, what she meant for that.
Because I thought we had renegotiated for this next coming year.
Yeah.
That's why I, I read this.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
All right, so we'll get some clarification on that, I'll get some clarification out of Christie, and we'll be ready to go next week and see if we, you know. I, like I say, I'd, I'd rather be proactive rather than reacting, and so let's get some numbers together and look and see already talking about what we're gonna be able to do and how we're gonna be able to do it, because, uh, I don't want any big surprises, and I, I'm still, um, I'm still in favor of us hosting another public meeting to discuss budget prior to the big.
We can convince department heads.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we'll meet again and, you know, that, that might help, so, we'll see.
No, but just your ads cost a lot of money.
You're right.
I know.
I mean, really.
Uh, as far as that, maybe we'll see about putting on, uh, putting on K U Z A N S community service ads and Facebook and everything else and, you know, word of mouth, see if we can get the, the word out there again and, you know, go that way.
So we will, legend information, payroll, EMS contract for next week, um, what else for? Anything else? Um, Facebook post, uh, again, um, I have a picture of the girl that I gave the award to, or, well, valid, uh, can I send it, just text it to Christie and if she can? Okay, and then, um, should we, could we, what do you guys think about, just going ahead and putting their, um, information on W Road completion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think, going there, down here, so we tell them what we want. She's still here for.
Is Erin available or?
Erin, she's probably up there, she could be at lunch, I guess, I don't know exactly.
Uh, you have to say she's come down, so we talked here about her Facebook page.
But put something on there to affect it, uh, just letting everybody know that it was affected by W Road, completion of that will be started this fall, um, and leave it at that.
Might see some ditching, prep work things, yeah.
Prior to that.
Yeah, I think that's good.
That's all I have.
She's gone.
She hasn't said something, but. And I think I'll have, I've got a, I've actually got a picture, and I was gonna do it prior, never got it then, of, uh, me reading classes up there at Central or the school. And, uh, I've got a picture too of the scholarship recipients, so I'll get to this here. Okay, you said something, the trigger's something, now the trigger's gone.
Apple today.
Yeah, tell me about it.
Glory days pictures?
What's that?
Glory days pictures?
Glory days picture, oh, not glory days picture, the.
I don't know, I was just trying to.
No, so, thank you for that, because yes, there was one thing in here that we got.
Oh, from the recorder?
Yeah, that we did last year, the meeting you were. Get to know you.
I took the picture of everybody on the stairs, yes.
Yeah. Did we want to do that again? Hang on, just one second, kid.
You're fine.
I just emailed, or emailed, uh, texted Christie a picture of the girl I gave to the sperm.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Picture that, and put her name, it's Avery, Avery Stilwell.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, just, we, I can go on there, and then we had talked about putting some information on there about W Road.
Uh, just, I think basically just letting people know that W Road is slated to be completed this year, but it will be completed later in the year. Uh, as we are trying to complete other projects at this time. Uh, they, they will probably see some preliminary work along W as far as ditching, uh, things like that, try to prep for the, come in quick new or later for its fall. And then I was going to text you a picture, uh, I read of the elementary school during the national reading day or whatever it was, I don't remember, you like the way it's called, but I'll find that out.
Okay.
And let you know that, and then, uh, same as Keith, I'll send you a picture for the Vance Werns Scholarship recipients that I handed out to at Old.
Okay. Are you wanting your scholarship pictures on the Facebook page or the website or?
We can put them on both.
Yeah.
Yeah, just.
I think we, I think we did, you know, good information for people on both.
Yeah, these are the twenty twenty-five recipients of.
Vance Werns Scholarship. Yep.
Are you gonna send me the pictures?
Yeah, I'll get them, yes. I will, you want to email, you want to text, what do you want?
Uh, either one.
Okay.
Whichever's easier.
Okay. I will get them to you. Anything else? For the Facebook page, I can't think of anything. Oh, well, I, I would like to make a comment, this is probably for the Facebook page, but for everybody in the community, say he's on the Facebook page, I'd, I'd like to, uh, thank Pat and Jerry for the work around the courthouse, uh, the courthouse yard and street, uh, you know.
Give, give picture of them together.
Yeah. I know they've had a, you know, with glory days and everything, you can't tell if there was anything out there, uh, they, they've done a heck of a job of long, especially with the rain and everything, so I really appreciate this, you guys.
Yeah, that could be a post all by itself, you know, just picture of them.
Jerry's always walking the square and in the lines.
Yeah, in the flag in the morning, yeah. So, like I say, I really appreciate this, too, they've done a heck of a job with the ground and everything, keeping it up, so. Did you see the meet the people ad thing that like we did last year for all departments?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, like, guys want to do it again?
Sure.
I don't, I think it's, it's, it's a good idea, it's, you know, gets the county out there and people recognizing who's in there, so. I think they said the estimated cost would be twelve and fifty bucks, so, probably take that out of commission or something, give that one, so, all right. Anything else? Jerry, you have any force bill? All right, I didn't entertain a motion, no adjournments?
Same, second.
Okay, we probably moved in second, and we adjourned this meeting, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right, good meeting, guys, thank you.
I'm gonna call Scott, have a conversation with him.
Yeah. I think that'd be good.
Ah, later.
See you later.
Okay.
Thanks, Erin, I'll get those pictures to you if you can.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.